How's it gonna affect evacuation on I-95? Because it's gonna be packed already. So, it needs to be really looked at as far as the volume of traffic in particular areas, as to how to move this traffic out of the city. Should a hurricane, or tornado, or fire, or something actually cause us to have to evacuate. So, I'm really concerned about it because I-95 is packed just about every day. And what is the city doing, or the county doing, to work with the state to address the issue of I-95 itself? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the -- yes, sir.
Good morning. Thank you all for your service. Appreciate the time. My name's Pete Minervini. I live in Palm Coast. Been here since 2004. I bought a lot next door to my address now, in intentions of building a garage to put my RV in. And I found out that I cannot do that. I need a door that's taller than 10 feet, and the current ordinance only lets you build a 10-foot door and a 30-foot-long garage. There's not even a variance process for this to go through. It's just basically a no, you can't build anything bigger than that. Other counties let you build this type of garage that I'm looking to build. Even Flagler County let you build this garage. It's just the city of Palm Coast that has this ordinance that they changed back when they were incorporated. Then there was a fire in a garage that was an RV garage with racing fuel in it, and I think they decided not to let these garages be built anymore. So, the traffic that this creates, besides I have to go get my RV from a storage location, bring it back to my house, load it, go on vacation, do my thing, and then drive again on the roads, bring it back to storage. So, there's four trips involved instead of just two. Me leaving my garage for my residence and coming home. So, I mean, did you see the storage facilities that are out there now? They're popping up all over the place because a lot of people have RVs or trailers, travel trailers, and they can't fit them in a 10-foot-door garage. It's impossible. Can't fit it in there, even the smallest ones. They all need at least 11 feet. Mine is 12.6. I need a 14-foot door. Now, when I moved here in 2004, luckily, I had a grandfathered house with an RV garage. My son and his fiancee live in that house now, and that's where I keep my RV in storage. And it fits in the neighborhood perfectly. These houses are all designed to look and fit in the neighborhood without, you know, it doesn't look like a big commercial building or anything. Looks like a regular house, just has a big garage door. So, you're looking for money for sidewalks, pave the roads. Here I am. I want to give you a check. I'll raise my taxes so you could build sidewalks and roads. Let me build a garage. Or let me be heard with a variance process at least, case by case. Let's open that up so you can listen to the case-by-case basis and approve them. Doesn't have to be an ordinance change. Just, I went to the zoning supervisor. Can't even be heard with a variance. So, I mean, I don't think that's fair. You know, I don't plan on doing anything but storing my RV in there and collect the cars. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there -- yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. My name's Scott Corum, 27, Cleveland Court. Appreciate you hearing me. I'm sure you've heard a lot about the sidewalks, and I'm very, very, very grateful that you guys have approved the sidewalks on Cimarron, which are desperately, desperately needed. You all know that. I just want to bring in one other factor that I'm sure you know, but I'm just bringing it to the attention again of council. There are people that are handicapped. I had an accident. I was on a knee scooter for six or seven months. And when you have a lawn truck and a pool truck where, I'm not complaining about them, they have nowhere else to go, they have nowhere else to park, and 80% of the residents use pool and lawn people, and then you've got a car coming this way and a car coming the other way, you have to get off, you have to go onto the grass. Well, if you have two good legs, it's not the end of the world. It's, you know, but when you're on a knee scooter, or a walker, or crutches, or it's just impossible. And it's, 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 it's not an accident when something happens. If it hasn't happened already, I'm new to the town. I don't know if anything's happened already. It truly is an accident waiting to happen. And I understand money. Money is always an issue. Money, money's always an issue. But this is honestly a matter of life and death. And when, when somebody does get hurt or dies, like I said, it's, it's not an accident. It's, it's an accident waiting to happen. And I would really, really appreciate it if you guys could take it from third base to home and find the money somewhere. Any little sidewalk would just really help the problem a lot, and I appreciate it. And I know you guys really work hard. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public like to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I will close this portion of the meeting for public comment, and I'll just come to the city council for a minute. Anybody want to make comment on any specific issues? I would only ask that city manager has the follow-up information for each of the residents' comments, so if there's a question, we can correct or advise or inform them correctly. Okay? Anyone else? Good. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our -- I thought you could sit down. Go ahead, you can sit. Our presentations. So, before we begin this morning, I want to take a moment to explain the city council's objectives for having workshops every month. The council meets in workshops to be well-informed of each item, to be brought before the city council, and to make the best determination on behalf of all city residents. City staff presents detailed information during the workshops and provides a summary background for each item, as well as any additional documents relative to the item. The city council can then have a meaningful, collaborative, and healthy discussion on each item presented. This way, facts and knowledge can be obtained prior to the next business meeting, where city council then makes the best determination in the interest of the citizen's health, safety, and welfare on each item. As we continue to grow as a collaborative council and follow all council meeting policies and procedures, I will always do my best to make sure that every city council member has an opportunity to bring forth individual opinions. Our constituents are expecting council to communicate cohesively and with civility to serve our community. The workshops are a valuable tool to present and discuss our individual opinions on behalf of all residents and achieve these objectives. We may not agree with each other, but that is one advantage of the workshops, to evaluate all the information necessary in advance of a decision, a motion, and a vote at our next business meeting. I hope that we all understand the purpose of these workshops, and I invite all opinions at all times on the dais. Now, with that said, I would ask city councilor to read the first resolution into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a nuisance abatement initial assessment, a resolution by the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida relating to the provision of nuisance abatement within the incorporated area of the city, estimating the service cost of nuisance abatement services to be assessed, determining that certain real property will be specifically benefited thereby, establishing the method of assessing the service cost against the real property that will be specifically, excuse me, specially benefited thereby, directing the city manager to prepare or direct the preparation of a preliminary assessment role based on the methodology set forth herein, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed assessments and the method of their collection, and directing the provision of notice in connection therewith, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. We have a presentation. Please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor and city council. Today's agenda item relates to the 2022 nuisance abatement initial assessment. In 2010, city council adopted an ordinance for the creation of an assessment area and authorized the imposition of a nuisance abatement assessments to be included in the annual non-advan-lawn tax bills sent through the county tax collector where the city abates a nuisance. Every year, the city has prepared the preliminary, which is today's item, the final coming-to-you next month assessment rolls. The final assessment roll is then transmitted to the tax collector by September 15th of each year. The types of nuisance violations covered under the ordinance are wildfire mitigation, hazardous trees, unsecured structures such as a house or a pool. This may be a broken window. It could be a broken door. We want to secure both of those types of structures. Bulk trash for unoccupied dwellings from a move-out or an eviction or an illegal dumping. An example of an illegal dumping would be yard waste, when they don't want to take it to the dump and want to put it on a lot, or accumulations of some type, household goods, something of that nature. Currently, staff has been diligently working towards a future remedy for occupied dwellings for future abatement. This process will also allow for due process. Right now, they're unoccupied properties. Since 2012, the city has collected $1,084,641.93 from the non-advan-lawn nuisance abatement assessments. The total bill is greater as there's time that the taxes are paid in different years because of, you know, the fiscal year that we have, and also tax deeds occur. When a tax deed occurs, depending on the amount of surplus the city may receive after applying in a tax deed situation, some of the amount owed. And this is something that we do every year.
Does that conclude the presentation?
Yes. Any questions?
I do have a question. And this may be a question for city councilor. This is a resolution. Why does it come before city council every year?
Because the statute requires you to bring non-advan-lawn assessment resolutions for approval before the city council.
On an annual basis?
Before, yes, on an annual basis.
That answers that question.
Actually, one curiosity. 2021, we billed 131,000, and we collected 100,000. Then in 2021, we billed 120,000, and we collected 129. Is that because of the transfer of the year?
It could be because we give this in September and we take it up. We start the initial in May, and then we submit it in July, and then we continue until September when we turn it over to the tax collector.
That is fine, my curiosity.
Thank you. Councilman?
Always a great job. What frustrates me about this is when you look through the detailed view and you see the actual addresses. A lot of the mailing addresses for these people are out of state, so a lot of this is coming from people who have secondary residence here, and that just kind of grinds my gears, but that's all I have.
Councilmembers? The only comment I would make is, so if you do the napkin math, it's $11.53 per resident as per the last census. I would love to see us discourage the violations in some additional way because they are difficult for the neighborhoods where they occur. I mean, we've had any number of, you know, residents come forward and have issues with all kinds of stuff appearing on yards and properties in their neighborhood, whether it be old junk or cars, or washing machines. Who knows what it is? All kinds of different things. I just would, would like you to think forward as to how we can increase the deterrent to doing this, if that's in any way possible. I know you spend your whole career on that, but it's just frustrating to me that we, and as we grow, it's something to keep in mind, that we can't let the beauty of our neighborhoods, you know, be diminished by those that would offend the codes.
And that is one of the items that we're looking at now because most of these that are, you're speaking of, are occupied dwellings with people in them. So, the due process that started with those occupied properties was through code enforcement board, which gave them a reasonable time to correct the violation. If they didn't correct it, then they'd become before the code board. And then if they were still in, not in compliance when they got to the code board, they'd again be given a reasonable time to correct the violation, and if they didn't, then a fine would start for every day that they're in violation. Then what they would do in two months approximately, they would, it would come back before the code board and amass, and that's a case law word, "massy," where they would put money, you know, the fine, and record the document. Now, a lien lasts for 20 years, so if you, you do the due process and it looks like nothing's being done, and you can't just come and take their real property. So, now we're looking into doing what we call a notice of remedy, which is, hence what we're talking about today with an abatement, where we would have to give them a reasonable time, do it as a notice of remedy. They have an appeal process, which is 15 days, and then they would go before the board, and they would be either successful or unsuccessful. And that would be a determination. If they're unsuccessful, then we would be able to remove everything and dispose of it, giving them their time. If it's acceptable, then it's not going away. So, that's what we're working on right now, and we've got nine properties that we're working on right now to see how this is going to work.
And if this, if this question is more appropriate for, for city councilor, but the lien that you mentioned prevents the, the transfer of the property, the sale of it?
It depends. If it's, if it's homesteaded, I cannot foreclose. I can't go into a foreclosure. It was your process. So...
But what about, what about the sale of the property to another?
Well, that would depend...
In other words, is, is a title defect, I assume?
Well, then what happens is there's a lien search, and then the title company contacts us, and if we can get the problem solved and taken care of, then we do a negotiated agreement to reduce the fine because we want to have compliance instead of, you know, hindering somebody from having a sale of a house and fixing it up and make it nice. It was just like when we had all the abandoned houses. And remember, with abandoned houses and rental properties, they're required to be registered so that assists us in getting, you know, a more prompt response.
And I would also ask city manager that supporting or working alongside the efforts of code enforcement is a communication from time to time out to the residents about, you know, being good neighbors and good residents within the neighborhood to, you know, abide by, you know, the, the rules that we have in place. I mean, it's not in our interest to, to find people. That's not our goal here, but it's the best deterrent that we have right now. But a positive communication to, you know, police your own neighborhoods and let us know what's going on might be a, you know, a good proactive approach as well.
Yes, I appreciate that, Mayor, and that's actually part of the proposed budget is looking at the communications and deliverable, the information that's most helpful, and especially to our new residents.
Very good. Any other questions from council?
Just good job, especially with the title, Shelley, nicknamed the Shelley. Very good job, and I thank you again.
Not a problem. Our pleasure.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the, the next agenda item, which is a presentation on diversity of housing survey questions. Ms. Kershaw, the floor is yours.
All right, good morning. I'm here to discuss the diversity of housing survey that was briefly touched on during the last SAP presentation. One of the council priorities under the strong and resilient economy pillar is to ensure continued smart, sustainable, long-term growth of the city of Palm Coast. Staff will develop a timeline and propose a budget accordingly to conduct a comprehensive evaluation and appraisal report analysis to an updated planning horizon of 2045. An objective of that priority is that in fiscal year 2022, staff will conduct a survey on resident feedback on multifamily housing in Palm Coast. This council priority lives with our community development department and will be spearheaded by Mr. Jose Papa, our senior planner. So, as part of this priority, they will engage a facilitator team to conduct a series of neighborhood meetings between residents and city staff about future growth, and they will complete a community dialogue and vision report that will serve as the building block for updating the goals, objectives, and policies in that comprehensive plan. So, as part of the review of the comprehensive plan, they'll have those public meetings, and out of that, we'll also plan to do an accompanying survey out to the public. And it's, for that reason, the recommendation of city staff that we create one comprehensive survey for this priority as a whole. This will help eliminate survey fatigue by our residents. However, the choice is yours, and we do have some survey options. We have our annual citizen survey that we do each year around December to January. We have a comprehensive plan survey that we just discussed that will accompany this priority that will take place in the fall or winter of this year. Or we have the option to do a standalone diversity of housing survey at your direction. Vice Mayor Brinkwino did come forward with a few questions that he would like to see on the survey, so I wanted to include them here for review. But after that, I'm open to questions, suggestions, and direction.
I just want to thank you for putting up these questions, and do you have any idea what the other questions are going to be?
I don't. So, we plan, community development plans to have those public meetings as we start going through the comprehensive plan. So, through that process, we will create one big survey to have public input so that we can get everyone's take from the community. And for that reason, it was suggested that these questions be included in that survey instead of having a standalone survey with just these two questions. But again, that's at your direction.
I wouldn't mind at all these two questions because in my mind, they're the most opinion ones. They're the most important ones. Anything else when it comes to housing, it's just going to be loaded questions. It's going to be distract people, and most likely, from what I see, I'm not going to be here by that time. I think we should just at least send these ones out there and let's, listen to what the people of Palm Coast have to say. Let's listen to what they have to say. And that's all I'm asking. And if they say no, we should keep on building those multifamily houses because they're good, especially for crime. They will not bring any crime. They will bring a, you know, affordable housing, which, take a look, a two, a two-room apartment, affordable, is $2,200. That's how affordable it is. And like I said, and I, before we go into further, I will, I will remind my friends, which I consider them all friends over here, that we will have affordable housing. Oh, yes, we will. As soon as people no longer want to move to Palm Coast, then we're going to have. I seen it happen. I'm passionate about this. I have nothing against investors because I'm an investor. I invested all my life savings in a home over here in Palm Coast because I thought that was going to get rid of the New Yorks of my life. And if we keep on building this, we're going to have a Newark over here. And I could say this because I came from there. And if you want to know where the crime has risen the most here in Palm Coast, don't look more than 300, 400 yards away from City Hall. If you don't believe that, then just ask the sheriff. He'll tell you what crime does. At least two of us over here that I know of, because they said it here, have lived in apartments and lived in multifamily homes. It was me and Ed Danko. Okay? We know what that brings. There are people in this room right here who lived in the Bronx and lived in other places, and they know what's living in multifamily homes are. This is why we should ask the people of Palm Coast, do we want this or not? I invested my life savings here, like many, many thousands of other peoples over here. Okay? Invested. And if we don't do something about it, later on, it's going to be too late. I'm here on the side of people. I'm saying this on the side of people. And if you think anything other, different than what I'm thinking, then you're not on the side of people. You're inside of something else. No idea? I don't even want to venture to see what it is. So, this is why I think those two questions should go out to the people separately. Because if we're going to load these two questions with all kinds of confusions to the people out there, okay? That's my perception. What we're trying to do is, I want two simple questions. I brought this up. And all I want is two simple questions. They couldn't be any more simple than what they are. There's no, not loaded, nothing else. And I wish my colleagues would be in favor of sending this ASAP to the people out there, and then we'll go about it. And if you come to me with the legal aspect of it, sorry, not buying it because there's other, other towns that are doing it. And all I'm looking at you is for safety, safety, capabilities that we have to handle this type of things. I mentioned to you the crime aspect of it. If you don't believe me, look at the only one that's totally full and see what the crime, how the crime went out there. And if you don't believe me, ask the sheriff. Maybe he'll tell you. I don't know.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify something because I'm, I'm not sure if Councilman Brinkwino maybe misunderstood me in the past. I did live in apartments before. I purchased a home many years ago, the Washington DC area. And I just want to say, I, I've never had any crime where I lived, so I just wanted to make sure. Thought you were inferring that I might have said there was a criminal thing or something where I lived, and that actually, I had no problem.
I also started my career and raised my first child in an apartment, but I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's relevant. Councilman, a question or comment?
No, I kind of want to see where discussion goes on this. I think that another interesting question might be, do you think that there is a need for multifamily housing development in, in the city of Palm Coast in addition to these two questions? I think there's diversity in the fact of whether you want the development to occur or whether or not we recognize that they may think that it is necessary. So, those are two separate points for me, but I'm curious where the rest of the conversation goes.
Councilman Finelli, any comment at this time?
I do have, I have a question for Brittany. What, is it a digital survey? Is it a paper survey? Is there an added cost to adding a third survey out there?
So, I believe that we were looking more at a digital survey because we already have the platform in place. Mailing out surveys would be an additional budget that we did not account for. However, it would not change things by having an additional survey. We just fear that our residents will have survey fatigue, and we know that coming up on looking at the comprehensive plan and opening that up, there will be a lot of feedback that we'll be seeking from the public. So, we want to make sure that when we do send out a survey, our residents will be responsive to it.
Okay. I also, I know from other surveys that I've seen go out, questions can be interpreted in different ways. And I know the mayor had brought up, the last time there was a conversation regarding this about what multifamily housing is referring to. Because my thoughts on it were duplexes, townhomes, same type of things. So, if we are going to ask these questions, I believe that we need to ask them in a way that it's very clear in the response that we're trying to seek. Because I believe there is some ambiguity in just putting multifamily.
Vice Mayor, I, I appreciate your addressing the issue of, of what we're calling multifamily, especially in support of our fresh responders, our teachers, and our healthcare workers who desperately need, we'll call it attainable housing. And certainly, that's among many other groups, a group that we would like to be able to have live close to their job location to avoid their having to travel here, and also to improve employee retention at our, again, hospitals with new hospitals coming, with the increase in the sheriff's operation, and also with, you know, fire and all of our other most valued, you know, employees and, and, you know, residents we hope of the community. The only, one of the questions that you have to help me over here with is... The only, one of the questions that you have to help me over here with is, the second question is very clear to me. The first question, are you in favor of additional multifamily housing developments in the city of Palm Coast? And I'm going to ask for your opinion back. Should we preface the question and share with the community how much multifamily currently exists? In other words, we're kind of asking, should there be more than what? In other words, I don't even know myself at this moment how much there is, which also leads to the question of, it's hard to know how much there should be if you don't know what your starting point is or where you're at. So it gets a little bit circular, but I am challenged by the, it is a simple question, but I'm concerned about the reference point that respondents would have to that particular question. The other question's pretty straightforward and clear. I understand that. So I don't know how to deal with that one.
When you're talking about the teachers and fire personnel, so you're talking about workforce housing. When we, every time we discuss this over here, we don't discuss workforce housing. We discuss, not subsidized, not yet, affordable housing. I just told you, not, this is not affordable housing. And what we're doing that is under the multifamily. If anybody, and we don't do respect for my colleague, if we don't know the difference between a multifamily and a duplex. A duplex, okay, a duplex is two single-family homes together, but they're single families. They're not multifamilies. And I don't think I would change the word. Are you in favor of additional? Additional means more than what we have. Let's not create a confusion. Additional means more than what we already have, which people, by the way, my colleagues know it because they must be getting the same calls that I do regarding where we're going. And people are completely against it. And are you in favor of additional multifamily housing developments in the city of Palm Coast? Either yes or no? And to answer, my dear friend, Clufus, is that yes or no? It's a simple, if no is no, then yes is a yes to your question. It can't be more direct. This is simple and direct. That's why I'm asking my colleagues to let me know if they are willing to actually have a standalone on this two simple questions.
Mayor, this is Nasa. Can I just have the floor for a moment?
Please.
So as far as this survey goes, from a legal perspective, the city can certainly ask these questions in a survey form. What makes me nervous and what you cannot do is take the results of this survey and use it when you're considering future quasi-judicial matters that come before you. You cannot say, for example, if a multifamily project came before you, say, well, I'm not going to approve this because people don't want it, and that's based on what the survey said. As you know, and as I've told the council on other occasions, quasi-judicial proceedings have to be determined by the evidence that's presented to the council on the record. It can't be determined by outside factors, and this would be an outside factor. These sample questions in the survey can, however, be used, as Brittany mentioned, in the comprehensive planning process, and that's what's most appropriate. You can use these questions and the results of these questions in trying to plan for how you're going to amend your comprehensive plan to adequately plan growth in certain areas of the city and what that will look like. So I just want to be clear as to if this survey is implemented, what the results of the survey can be used for.
So this would be research that, we have a strategic action plan that calls for us to review, I don't know if the term update is in the strategic action plan, the comprehensive plan. So this would be research that we could use as we discuss updating the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
Absolutely. That's correct.
Okay. So the, okay, so there is a useful result in acquiring the information. So Brittany, could you go back to the slide that showed the options? Because I think you're asking for city council to give you some direction on this. Is that my understanding?
Yes. So we have the annual citizen survey that we do this year, this coming years will be a homegrown survey, so that will be between December and January. The comprehensive plan survey that is outlined with this council priority will happen in fall, winter of this year, or we can do a standalone survey if that is your direction.
So I would ask my Philly, Philly, I had an apartment in Philadelphia, too. I would ask my fellow city council members, if, as the vice mayor is suggesting, we do a call-out on these particular questions, does that set a precedent for issues that come before city council in the future? In other words, if there ever is another issue, will this be pointed to as a precedent, hey, let's do another survey on this, you know, unrelated, on another issue and another issue? I don't know the answer to that either. So I just want to be cautious in the consideration when we pull the trigger on this kind of thing, that we understand what its utility is and what its precedential impact might be. So I'll just go down the line. So Vice Mayor, we know which, how you feel, and I'll ask Councilman Clufus, what, how do you feel about it?
Yep. I'm also curious as far as the precedent that sets because when it comes to input from our community, I mean, are we talking about like the next survey that goes out, like, can we build detached RV garages? Like, that's something that, you know, came in just today. Like, does this set precedence to be able just throw these questions out there?
Or should we have a YMCA? Or, you know, it could be, you know, either way, it doesn't, you know, okay?
Like we had on parking?
Right.
Survey on that?
Yep.
Didn't we have a survey on that?
The graphics.
That may be before my time. I don't know.
Yeah, but we did have a survey on that.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, that didn't open any can of worms. It was just a survey. People weren't legitimately interested in that, so we had a survey.
Yep.
Nothing wrong with that.
Well, again, it would be evident, not evidence, it would be research information that could be considered during the time of comprehensive plan updates. Council members?
I agree with Councilman Clufus on that.
Okay. And Councilman Finelli?
Isn't that the intent of the comprehensive plan survey is to ask and address these questions that are related to that survey?
So much like a, let me try, and Nasa, help me with this. Let me make an analogy. If I am reviewing a, an agreement, a contract perhaps, the contract is composed of, you know, some number, perhaps many different clauses. The clauses may have an effect on other clauses or the intent of the entire agreement. Therefore, pulling out an individual clause, or in this case, pulling out a specific reference in the comprehensive plan probably impacts other sections and/or parts of the comprehensive plan. Is that a fair comparison?
Well, I think the more appropriate way to look at it is when we go in to do these, this holistic comprehensive plan overview, planning staff, and planning staff would be better able to describe this than I can, but I'll take a shot at it. Planning staff wants to look at the city as a whole in its entirety, and it, and in looking at that, they're looking at what all the uses are, where there's infrastructure, where there's places to put certain uses that would fit better than other locations. So when you're looking at that, you want a whole picture of where these things should go, it should be, and you want to know what the public thinks about the plan and where to put these, and, you know, this higher level view. You want to know that cohesively so you can do it all together. That's why these holistic amendments to the comprehensive plan only happen every five years because you're taking a whole look at it. To pull something out piecemeal can go towards that, but you're just not necessarily getting the whole picture all at once. I guess it's the best way to describe it.
So I guess I'll have to, I'll ask each council member, which of the, which of the options, because we have to give staff directions so that we can move forward. So do we have a, well, give us the opinions and we'll see if we have a consensus.
I do have one more question for Brittany. What is the information that goes into the annual citizen survey?
So that is very much citywide. So it talks about our parks and programs. It talks about street maintenance. It's a very, like, broad picture of how citizens feel about the services provided by their city.
Thank you.
So let me offer my opinion. I have no objection to the call-out approach, provided council doesn't come back to me and tell me that it's precedential and causes us an issue. However, I would want to preface that, the particular question about, do you want more with the actual, with the starting point? In other words, what are the percentages of the housing as it exists today? So that's one opinion. So I would ask for each of your additional opinions.
Well, my opinion is that I, I will be vehemently, vehemently in favor of a two-question survey, standalone survey of the two questions I put in. That's what, and that's what I want to know, if my colleagues agree with me or not. Do we agree with those two questions to be put on a survey ASAP? That's all I'm asking.
Councilman?
If they were put on an individual survey, what type of distribution channels are we looking at here to try to draw analysis from? So we're not going to ask all 90,000 residents, right? Are we going to draw a pool of diversified individuals and then extrapolate out what the mathematical significance would be? So are we going to, like, reach out to 300 people and say, okay, these people represent, you know, our universe, and we'll go from there? Or how's that look?
So the technology that we currently have is not that advanced. So it probably would be more of an open-ended, whoever would like to respond can, and we would market it through all of our current communication channels as well as through the national citizen survey that we did in December, January of last year. We have a pool of people who registered, who have already told us they're interested in taking future surveys, so it would go out to those people as well. That's a little over 1,000 people.
And is there a failsafe to prevent multiple responses from a single individual?
Yes, there is.
How is that done?
Through the software. They have some technology that I can get you better.
So what if an individual has six different email addresses?
I, I'll check with the...
Thank you.
Well, I think that's a very good point. What if someone has?
Well, we've been down this road before, I think, and I just want to clear out any of the obstacles.
Because many folks have various email addresses. My question is, you know, you see polls done all the time, and there's always a margin of error, minus, plus, 3%, whatever. These polling companies, some of them, not all of them, but they do have some expertise and they, you know, have been doing it a long time. What's our margin of error? We even know what it is.
So this would not be considered a scientific survey?
It's basically, there's, I don't see us getting much out of this, to be honest with you, other than, you know, pushing it into more of a conversation like we're having now, but I think it's a waste of time and money. If you want to put these questions in our annuals survey, that, I'm good with that. But standalone, really don't see any point because it's not going to give us an accurate response. Councilman?
I have very similar concerns that if you put out a survey with two questions on it, you're going to get the people that are, that have a specific opinion on those two questions. If you roll it into an annual survey or comprehensive survey, then you may get a more diverse group of people responding to it because they're responding to a whole survey, not just to how they feel about those two questions. So I would have a concern with us just asking people two questions, knowing that the people that will respond are going to be people that are probably on either side of that issue compared to a more generalized survey where you're going to get a more comprehensive view of everybody in the community.
I would be open to this going to people, as long as it's in a bigger context of, hey, we're going to be reviewing our comprehensive plan, and these type of discussion points can potentially come up in, through that process. I think if we phrase it in the right way and that we gave the people who are responding to this type of survey the information to become more involved throughout the comprehensive land use discussions, I think there's value in that. I think as long as the tone is set in the correct manner and it's just not blasted out with, hey, here are two questions, because very similar to what we saw with the commercial vehicles being parked in residential driveways, I thought that was kind of skewed as well. And I think it's impossible to just ask two questions and have them as binary responses, yes or no, without a here's why line and get practical results out of it. But I think it can be a tool to at least let people know that we're reviewing our comprehensive land use process and that we are looking for their input, and these are an example of the questions that council members have for our constituents.
So I would ask, if we're looking at option number two, which would be the earlier of the two, would everyone be in agreement to give staff direction to include the questions on the comprehensive plan survey? That's kind of what I'm hearing, but you help me with that.
Yeah, I still have a little bit of a concern about how that first question is worded because the way I interpreted it, it could be interpreted in many different ways, especially by a lot of residents that may not have the in-depth knowledge of what we discuss, you know, as a council. So I just worry, you know, does that mean communities that have, you know, a gated community? Is that a multifamily development? Just a gated community? I mean, that's a question that I would have, and I understand Councilman Brinquino, Vice Mayor Brinquino's question and what he means by it, but I don't know that people that don't know Vice Mayor Brinquino, if they would interpret that question in the same way.
If, may I?
Please.
I don't think I could be anymore. How would you change this question then, from multifamily to what? How would you change it?
I don't, I don't have a good answer for that, but I do...
Could we ask staff?
Honest with you.
Could we ask staff, could we ask staff to give us another, another shot at the question? Can you work with staff on the question?
I just want to know if my colleagues are in favor of doing a standalone on these two questions. That's all I want to know. And then if you want to change it a bit, yeah, but I want this, I want to know if...
So what I'm hearing is that, and again, Councilman Clufus, I think I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what I've heard is that city council does have a consensus to apply those two questions and many more, of course, in the, in the second option that you presented.
The comprehensive plan survey.
And I don't belong here. I'll rethink, I'll rethink my future of today because I don't belong here. I don't want to do this to the people of Palm Coast. I don't belong here, and I'm going to think with my family, I want to do what I want to do, being here and not caring for the people of Palm Coast because that's exactly what you do. Okay? Thank you very much, and let me think about my future, sir, and I'll have an answer for you by the end of the next week.
Okay, does staff have directions so that they can move forward with the item?
Yes.
Not my direction, you're right now.
All right, with that, we'll move forward to note the record that Council, Vice Mayor Brinquino has left the dais at this point. Our next presentation will be city special events overview.
We're just going over a overview of the special events that we host in the city that are reoccurring and how it impacts our community. reoccurring and how it impacts our community. So what do special events provide? Events bring people together and they help instill a sense of community pride. They help attract people to our town as well. When we resumed in-person events after we were shut down for a period of time, we had seen continual growth since we started bringing events back in attendance. We also received positive impact from residents that help us improve our events. Next, I would like to take you through highlights of the annually reoccurring events that we host. First off, we have Movies in the Park, which is a free event for families to come out and catch a movie. We show recent films like Sonic the Hedgehog, all the way to oldies like, you know, Cool Runnings and Hook. This event does not impact Epic Theaters, as we do not show anything that is currently live in theaters, so there's no impact there. The attendance that we have for fiscal year '21, we have an average of 41 people that come out, with our highest of 91, lowest of 47, and it's Florida and it's an outside event, so rain happens, we have to cancel the event. This year, we've actually broken our records than last year and have had over 100 people come to a movie. It was Shrek. And our expenditures are 2,841 for fiscal year '21, and that is because we do purchase the rights to be able to show these movies properly in our park. Food Truck Tuesday, one of our biggest reoccurring events, is free to the community, comes out of our special events budget. It's reoccurring March through October, the third Tuesday of the month. Our average attendance of fiscal year '21 was 866, with our highest attendance, 1,237. We actually beat that this year as well, we're getting over 1,300 people, and our lowest was 682. And that's because we had to cancel it a little early because of rain. In total, we estimate almost 7,000 people at our event last year. Our expenditures for this event are 8,179 for last fiscal year, and the reason for that is because Food Truck Tuesday has a nonprofit organization which is a beneficiary every month. The food trucks pay a vendor fee to come in, and we take those profits to give to these nonprofit organizations, which do things to help our community such as scholarships for children, helping with animals, so on and so forth. And then the revenues we bring in is 6,150, so it is a relatively well cost recovery event, and we have continually seen growth in this event. We have Easter Extravaganza, which is free to the community, comes out of the special events budget. We changed the format of this. Before we were shut down, we had a egg patch, and we noticed in the egg patch, one little child would get one egg and be thrilled to death about it, when another kid gets 40 eggs and runs out, and it was starting to cause some issues. So we changed it to a bunny trail. This bunny trail allows us to bring out community organizations such as churches, like Bikers Against Child Abuse, Veteran Service Organizations, and they set up entertainment and activities for kids. They'll go do these activities and then they'll get an egg or a few in return, so now every kid's getting the same amount of eggs when they leave. Our average attendance, or estimated attendance, sorry, is fiscal year '21 is 3,000, fiscal year '22 is 3,500, as we increased the size of the event and the entertainment we provided. Our expenditures of fiscal year '21 were $1,209. That is because we purchased all the Easter eggs in fiscal year '20, and then we didn't have them. And they were still good, right? Oh, yeah, no, they're still good. Non-perishable, still good. Perfect. So fiscal year '22, we saw an increase in expenditures because we had to buy more eggs, and we have seen an increase in the revenues as well by adding more entertainment and factors such as that. So fiscal year '21, we saw $718, and we went up to 1,309 this year, so it is starting to make its, its way closer to even. Next would be Tunnel to Towers. This is the first year we held this event, which is a community 5K run to benefit the Tunnel to Towers organization. We had 325 people registered this year, and these revenues went, went to the Tunnel to Towers organization, and we will continue to host this event as long as we keep providing the same amount of effort and service that we put in this year, if not increasing it next year. Touch a Truck. This event brings out children and families in a unique way because it allows the opportunity for children to engage with public services. A lot of kids, when they're very little, I want to be an astronaut, I want to be a doctor, well, they come out here and then they might have a new outlook on what they want to do. I want to drive a bulldozer or an excavator, or I want to be in the Army or a police officer. It also allows for city staff to engage with the community as well and let them know what kind of services we offer, for instance, public works, utilities, stormwater, and parks maintenance. Arbor Day is a free community event that comes out of the special events budget. Due to the fact we are a tree city, we have to have an Arbor Day type event, and we do have a large event every year. Our expenditures are a little high, but the reason they're high is because we purchase trees, and in turn, if people come and donate canned food, we give them a tree in return. So we're benefiting someone else as well as trying to promote our green spaces and educate people on our environment. Memorial Day, free ceremony comes out of the special events budget. We haven't, we have seen a little bit of growth in this event in attendance, and we are continually improving our Heroes Memorial Park, and when we see those improvements and we kind of clear out a little more space, we can fit more people to come into this event. Fiscal year '21, we spent $162. This year, we spent 969, but that is because with the American Flag Project, we purchased 51 brand-new flags, and that's what we put in Central Park for all of our military-based Fireworks in the park, now fireworks over the runway. A free event for the community comes out of our special events budget. Last year, when we had it in the park, we estimated about 5,000 people in the park with about 10,000 people viewing the fireworks in total. This could be from the apartments, Epic Theaters, the streets leading out to the park. Some people were watching them from over at the airport last year. This year, since we partnered with Flagler County, Flagler Executive Airport, and with Flagler Broadcasting, and some assistance from Flagler Beach, we were able to get about 10,000 to 15,000 people inside the airport vicinity watching the fireworks, with an estimated 20,000 people watching the fireworks, and they could be seen all the way from Central Park, Target, pretty much everywhere. Outer space? Probably. And our expenditures went up a little bit this year, but that's because with a bigger show, it costs a little more, but with help from Flagler County Government Tourism Development Office, we do get a grant for $20,000 to help offset the cost of the fireworks.
So just so I understand, the $30,000 you show there is before you net the county's contribution?
Yes, that's what we currently spend for the fireworks and for the city staff's overtime.
So if you net that, it's $10,000, half of, well, I don't know what we got the year before, but it's, okay. I just want to understand the number.
Art district events. This one, we are expanding currently. One of our events is the Chalk Art Fest. It is a $15 event. For $15, you get the large chalkboard and a 48-pack of Crayola chalk, which is better than the dollar pack you can buy at Walmart. And this helped kind of bring arts into our city a little more by getting people to just sign up and just make whatever they want. We took the top 10 pictures, we put them on our Facebook and Instagram, and we had the community vote for who they thought was the best, and these ones that won are hanging up in some facilities. We have one that's upstairs in this building, we have one at the pool, we have two over at the community center. We had 30 people registered for this event, spent $298, but brought in $450. One of our events that we are planning in the fall is another art event, Art Expo, and we're hoping to increase the amount of art we're bringing into our city. The Waterway Cleanup, which is a free community cleanup event. In fiscal year '21, we had 252 people register. We got a grant from Find for $3,103, so in total, we only spent $80. This event encourages the appreciation of our green spaces, and the event collected 1,750 pounds of trash from our waterways. And some of the unique finds that we had last year were a coffee maker and a World War I replica gas mask. This helps improve the quality of life in the ecosystem in which we live. Senior Games. Senior Games is a week-long sport qualifier. We work with the Florida State Senior Games, and we are a regional qualifier for the area, except we reach way within, without, out of our region. We pull in people from Tampa, two hours south of here, Jacksonville, the villages, and our three major sports are tennis, pickleball, and golf. Last year, we had 129 players sign up, and the majority of them went to state senior games and qualified, and a couple of them went to nationals and actually placed. The cost per player is $15. Our expenditures were $3,826 with a revenue of $1,935. Pink on Parade 5K, which is a 5K event that we partner with Advent Health. This comes out of our special event budget. This event is 100% cost recovery, the city's obligations as we help with the registration and logistics. So we bring in all the registration money. Once we cover the cost of the overtime spent on setting up the racecourse, everything goes to Advent Health, and that helps the local Flagler County residents with breast cancer testing, treatment, and other breast cancer-related needs. The Hall of Terror, which is a free two-day community special event. It comes out of the special event budget. The cost for this is mostly due to needing a storage facility. The Palm Coast Local Fire Union 4807 gives $2,000 to help offset these costs, and the fire department does a great job in providing a safe environment to enjoy Halloween activities. We estimated about 3,500 people in the two days that it was open came in to enjoy themselves or get scared, either one. Veterans Day. It's a free event for veterans and their family. This year, we are partnering with Flagler County. In previous years, Flagler County would host a ceremony, and then everyone would come to Central Park afterwards for a free barbecue. This year, we're going to do it all in the same place, working together. Last year's attendance, or fiscal year '21's attendance was 375, and we spent 10,365. The last one we had, we brought in 400 people, spent a little less, and saw our first revenue thanks to a sponsorship. And we will continue to grow this event, especially since now we're partnering with Flagler County's Veteran Service Office. Feet to Feast 5K is a community 5K event that takes place Thanksgiving morning. Last, our fiscal year '21, we held it virtually, and fiscal year '22, we brought it live, and we had 480 people registered, spending $12,302, but bringing in $12,890. This event is meant to be 100% cost recovery. Our Tree Lighting Ceremony. We have two major holiday events, Tree Lighting Ceremony and Starlight Festival, and we split these events with the Rotary Club. Tree Lighting Ceremony, it partnered with the Rotary Club because they set up the fantasy lights. They are the ones who secure the vendors and the entertainment for this event, so they're the ones who see the revenues for this event. Oh, okay. The expenditures are mostly due to storage facilities for the tree that we purchased. We want to keep it in the best condition we could possibly keep it in so that we have it for as long as we can before having to make major upgrades to it. The Starlight Festival, formerly the Starlight Parade. We worked with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office on finding a way to make a safe event, so we came up with a static parade. We lined Park Street up with our floats that would normally be going down the road, and this actually gave businesses and organization, organizations a chance to meet with the community and talk about their business, rather than a float going by and just saying hi. So they actually got to interact with the community in which they work and live. Fiscal year '21, our expenditures were a whole $82, and that is because we didn't have it. Instead, we created the Holiday Light Fight, which is an online light contest. People would decorate their houses, submit their houses, and then it would get judged and they would win little prizes. We were hoping for 50 people to sign up for that. We got over 200, so because of the success of that event, we are continuing that one as well. Fiscal year '22, for the Starlight Festival, we estimated about 5,000 people in attendance. Instead of a regular parade where people show up and they stay there, we were able to have people come and go as they please, so it also helped with the traffic. Our expenditures were $1,380 with a revenue of $1,050. And this is just an overview of the events we'll host next year. And now, not every event held in the city is a city-run event. I would like to briefly talk about how outside groups have events in the city of Palm Coast. So we have the Special Events Review Team. External groups or organizations apply for an event, and then they will come meet with the Special Events Review Team, or CERT. CERT is comprised of different departments within the city, such as Public Works, Park Maintenance, the Business Tax Office, Parks and Recreation, Building Planning, Fire Department, and the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. We try not to deny any event, and we help make recommendations if the event doesn't seem feasible to have in our facilities, but we try and get everything in as we can. And one of our major jobs is helping these events with providing city services to them, people to help maintain the bathrooms, trash, putting up the digital display signs on the road, directing them to their event, and so on. And some of our external events are listed here as well. And that would be it. Any questions?
A comment first. If I may. In your, I guess, in your budget presentation, would you be consistent in your description of the cost? In other words, I, I see some slides show a net after a contribution or grant or whatever, and others maybe not so much. My interest is if there are those that are contributing or supporting or donating some of these events, we can perhaps increase our ask or find additional supporters to further reduce the city's expense. I'm not looking to reduce the number of activities, but to find ways to further engage and financially engage, especially the business community, in supporting these events. I mean, I think the number of people that you have represented throughout these slides is phenomenal, so I'd like the business community, you know, supporting the Be Local, By Local theme to be even better partners in these events for the future. And speaking of that, the first slide I think you showed had to do with Movies in the Park, so just a question for you. Based on the average number of attendees, if you were to take 50, let's say, and you were to offer tickets to Epic Theater, it looks to me like the cost would be about $750. I don't know what your number was, but I think it was significantly higher to arrange it, organize it, and put on the show. to arrange it, organize it, and put on the show. Epic is in Town Center, so it does, it does bring people here. I don't know how you could make an arrangement so that people could sign up, you know, for it or perhaps have a discussion with Epic. It's just a thought, based on the differential in the numbers. And you might want to apply the same kind of financial thinking to each of the other projects. And then I just have one other comment, that as we review, as City Council reviews this list, I think we come to an understanding that there may be asks from other groups throughout the community or from even outside the community. And I think once we lock in on this calendar and schedule, unless you all are willing to put an undetermined reserve in, we would be, staff would be telling people that are looking to do events over and above this calendar to bring with them a self-funding mechanism. We can certainly help them locate grants and/or other opportunities. But they should be self-sufficient, except for the help of staff in identifying the revenue source that will fund the event, whatever it may be. And I don't know what they are, but, you know, it can't be an ever-expanding envelope. I think that we have to show some fiscal constraint as we work through a conservative approach to the budget this year, while keeping the engagement of the community intact. The only other comment I would have is that I looked through your slides, and there's a lot of young folks, which is my favorite. But you have to always try to keep in mind and balance that we have enough activities for those seniors like myself so that we are representing the entire community at all time. Councilman?
Yeah, I fully agree with everything you said, except the senior like myself thing.
What was only me?
You're mad I was the same age?
I was, one opinion, it was my own.
That's why I was laughing.
I did have a question. Is there a process for adding or sunsetting some of these different activities? Oh, sorry, what was that? Is there a process for adding new activities? For instance, I was approached by President of the Junior Chamber about the possibility of an international food festival at Town Center. How would somebody even go about starting to look at whether that would be feasible? And how, how they would just start the process of something like?
Yeah, they can always come and talk with us. We're open to any ideas, obviously budget-constraining. And with what the mayor said, we can always kind of help with that. We always, after each event, we do a review and kind of an evaluation. We do that with all our programs and events, really. And so if there's some that, you know, aren't really well-attended or some that, you know, kind of starting to kind of, I guess, dissolve, then we might look into adding something else. And that's kind of how we process it, if, when we sunset or add a program or event. That's our process.
Based, based on a budget cycle. In other words, we're talking now about what the budget that we're working on looks like. And then alterations to that would be made in the subsequent budget cycle.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, you know, awesome work. This is such a huge component to interfacing with the public. And you guys do such a tremendous job. Everybody on the staff is always above and beyond accommodating. And it really brings a nice personal touch to Palm Coast when we get people out there to participate in these events. So anything we could do to keep advertising them, bring more people out to these things. And I think you've been doing a great job keeping track of cost recovery as well.
Yeah, Jared does a good job. He doesn't sleep much during some of these events, but he...
So please remind Jared that there is no more important element or component of what we generally and consistently refer to as the lifestyle of the city of Palm Coast. This is actually where it begins, so extremely important. So thank you, Jared.
Jared does a good job.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to our next presentation, which is Florida Park Drive Medians Project Update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The city put together a project, a design project, to build two median locations on the Florida Park Drive. And we sent out a project for bid, and we've gotten bids back. And I want to share with you the results of those bids. The two locations where the medians are proposed to be built are shown here in stars as locations A and B. As you saw, I believe, two council sessions ago, our utilities engineer brought forward a project that was going to close Florida Park Drive. And that location that is closed is shown as the bottom square on Florida Park Drive on this, on this design. With Florida Park Drive closed, we have a detour of traffic being sent to Frontier Drive to get around the road closure. Let me go back. This project is going to build two median locations. First median location is shown here. This is the southern location. This is just north of Faragut Drive. It will put, the purpose of the medians, as intended, is to create a diversion for traffic so that it would cause traffic to slow as they go through this area. The pavement will be slightly narrower than the standard lane. And we have also some elements to beautify the area. There are two park benches that are being put in, as well as plantings, so that it looks very, very nice and presentable. The second location that's being proposed is to the north of the first one. It's between Foster Lane and Flint Court. Again, there's a central median for traffic to, to slow them, and they diverge around two park benches, two, and landscaping that's been, that's going to be installed to make the area pretty. With the bid that we got back, the bid came in at three hundred and ninety-two thousand. The assigned budget for the project was two hundred and forty-two thousand. The engineer's estimate for the project was a hundred and ninety-one thousand. So we came in with a bid from just one bidder, and the price was about double what we were expecting the bid to be. So the objective of this is, council gave us an original budget of two forty-two to construct the project. How do you want to proceed? Do you want us, we can not build the project. We can build the project as is. Or we can build just one of the median solutions, potentially at half the price. Now, that last option, that last option would be if the contractor agrees to keep their existing pricing. Contractor potentially could say, no, I'm not willing to keep my pricing. I bid an entire package, not a partial package. So the budget overrun compared to our original budget, with a contingency of ten percent, and city staff at a nominal zero cost doing the inspection of the project, would be a budget overrun of approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So the question to council is, I'd like to get your conversation.
Sure. So, so first question, just to get, get me up to speed. So City Council approved a budget of two hundred and forty-two, which was based on staff recommendation, I assume. To help us understand the, the increase, the delta between the assigned budget and the bid?
The assigned budget, if we had come in at the engineer's estimate plus a ten percent contingency, would have been satisfactory to build, build the project. Market forces exist right now that prices are going extremely high, and contractors are very limited. The city of Palm Coast is in a region where we have relatively few contractors available to do this work. There are essentially four contractors who might be able to do this work for the city. We, of those contractors, we know two of them are extremely busy, and that's why they didn't bid this project. We got only one bid for the project, and the project's probably more escalated than it would be simply because there just are not contractors, contractors are full.
So are we paying a premium because of supply and demand? I mean, we're, I don't want to say being held hostage, but because of our geographical location and the availability of, of, of resources to do this, we're being asked to pay an exorbitant premium, in your opinion?
It would seem that part of the overrun, maybe about fifty or sixty percent of it, would be the cost of existing material.
Right.
And the additional amount would be a premium for our location and the lack of contractors.
And this is not a negative to the contractors. It's just that they probably have more concentrated construction efforts in other metros and areas. So our quaint, small city of Palm Coast compared to the others suffers this, this expense?
That's not always the case.
Okay.
When the market is, when the market is average, we often get better prices than the surrounding communities do because we're the only game in town, as it were. Right now, the market forces are just the opposite. There's work to be done everywhere, and so we're not at, we're not as desirable for a place.
That's the demand side, yeah. And then the other question I have is, understanding that probably it would be inefficient financially in the overall view, but can the project be broken up into two or more phases to take the bite out of the current budget that you're asking for direction on?
This project could be done, to do it in two phases would be inconvenient.
Right.
It will, it's going to require the shutdown of Florida Park Drive, closing the roadway. We have the roadway closed for four to six months with the existing project. If we were to approve this project now, we could, we could build the entire project within the same timeframe as that other project and have, have no additional impact on the roadway, as it were, because we'd be closed, the roadway's already closed to traffic.
And if we split it in two, there's probably a surcharge on the project. But the bite out of the budget would be, is that calculable?
If we were to split it in two, we would have to increase our traffic control, and we, and put it out for a second bid, potentially, as it is, because the traffic control would cost, based on, we got prices for doing the traffic control separately from the same contractor in concern that we may overrun one of the projects with traffic control, and then it becomes one of the contractor's responsibility to maintain the traffic control. And the preliminary estimates on that are about seventy thousand dollars additional if we were to reset up the traffic control.
Councilman?
I think just from my perspective, and I had a moment where I looked over at Councilman Danko, I think we both realized that just the environment right now. I mean, the engineer's estimate was almost doubled with the bid from, you know, I understand we didn't get all the prospective applicants that we were hoping for. But I just think at this time, paying, paying double what an engineer estimates the project should actually cost is kind of a, a sign of the times that we're in. And I'm not necessarily sure that I support this in its current form, requiring that much of an additional budget line item.
And, hold on, was I?
I'm sorry to speak for you, Councilman Danko.
Let me, I just, let me add one comment to Councilman, if I may. So, you know, we're facing a very uncertain, you know, economic, economic times. I'm aware of large construction projects that are dialing back, scaling back, or quite honestly, being delayed or canceled. My only, how long ago was this negotiation done with the contractor? In other words, how, how, how current is it?
The bid came in just two weeks ago.
But the, but the, the arithmetic and all of the consultation and all of the prep work covered what period of time before that?
The arithmetic by the engineering company come up with the estimate was done about two and a half months ago.
Two and a half months ago, okay. And the only, the only place I'm going with this is some of these very, very busy builders, contractors, road constructors are starting to see a scale-back in some of their operations. I'm just wondering, if we were to go back now in the face of the economy that we're looking at, might we end up with a better financial result? Don't know the answer to that, but, Councilman?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that either. I just think at this point in time, with the uncertainties we're facing and the uncertainties our residents are facing with the cost of everything going through the roof, I don't think we can have overruns like this. And I just don't think it's worth it at this time to proceed.
I, I do see the value of the project as a whole. I do have a question, though. Is this money that has been allocated or assigned to this project money that could be reallocated to the resurfacing of our roads?
This money would be in the same category as the resurfacing of our roads. So yes, it could be reassigned to resurfacing our roads.
Okay, thank you.
I have one other question, and this is kind of analogous to this. But can you speak to the persistence of individuals who are still trying to travel down Florida Park Drive even though there's temporary closures? Just because we talk about deterring traffic going down Florida Park Drive very often. And this is a measure that would contribute to that effort. But could you just speak real fast about what we've seen as a whole? And just any feedback that you could give us about people's persistence to try to continue down, going down Florida Park Drive?
So I'm going to go backwards to the traffic control. This traffic control is very basic. But the existing project where the closure is, is right around, is right at Faraday Drive. That location is near a whole bunch of opportunities around Island, Island Walk Shopping Center for traffic to take diversions around the intended traffic control. There's a nearby pharmacy. There's nearby, the Observer building is an opportunity for people to detour through there. And we're seeing a lot of people not rec, not recognizing the signs or not acknowledging them and making their way around the traffic control. I went out with my team to look at the traffic control this Friday. And we've worked with the project manager, and the project manager's completely on board with the changes that we want to make to try and make the detour a little more clarified. We've also talked with Flagler County Sheriff about what opportunities there are to use, use the sheriff's ability to write tickets to keep people from making these detours. The detours that are occurring through the private property, we've put up no detour signs. We've talked with the owners regarding putting up barricades across their property to keep people, keep people from coming through. For a business to say, I'm going to close one of my driveways so that people can't get into my property is a big ask. But it's, we're trying to do everything we can to improve the detour, to make it clear. And at the same time, work with, work with their local residents who are, their property's being used as the de facto detour by some drivers. It's, it's a, it's a struggle that's never going to be perfect.
Isn't the, the COP headquarters within walking distance of that square?
I'm, I'm not familiar with that.
The new COP building on, on, well, no, actually, no, I'm sorry, over, over on Old Kings, which is on the other side of the, the cut-through there. I'm just wondering, with all the cars that I see parked there, have we, have we approached the sheriff in order to talk about COP assistance, volunteer assistance in assisting our residents in this, you know, temporary, but long temporary change? I just, it's just a question.
From our office, we've talked with the county sheriff. Um, from our office, we've talked with, uh, County Sheriff and specifically with the traffic officers who are out on, who are out patrolling. And they would like to help, but it's a continuous effort. It's one of those things like, I, I, the analogy comes to me of the Dutch boy who put his finger in the, in the dyke and it's like, you're asking us to stand there 24 hours a day and put our finger in the dyke?
No, no, I mean, they, they have the expertise on the peaks and, and, and all of that, but the, the, the show of engagement with the community would, would go a long way. So that's, I'm kind of looking for that, but, but I understand. Um, um, I, I would ask that, since we're uncertain as to how much of the overrun is related directly to increased costs of material, um, and then how much is perhaps reserved for maybe, um, prices are going up or maybe there's a labor shortage or maybe some other factors that are unidentified? I'd be curious to know in the bidding estimate, what the detail lines are made up of there? Because is that level of overrun, can we renegotiate just that part of it?
So the question is, can we renegotiate that part of it?
The, the piece, the overrun piece, in other words, what comprises the overrun? In other words, absent the cost of materials, because we all know that, you know, fuel, materials, labor and stuff are going up, but you, you indicated that maybe a part of it was their anticipation of, of reserves perhaps to ensure their, their success with the project or unknowns? Because it's a big, because it's a big number. In other words, I guess what I'm really asking is, can they cut that number in half?
Um, I've never, I've not experienced negotiating with a contractor based on a, a closed bid as part of the solution.
Okay. Nacef, is that a, um, a procedural legal issue that we have?
So, I mean, I think there was only one response. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so since there was only one response, continued negotiations to work out a deal from the parties would, would be permissible, it seems, because you don't have the, um, there's no one there that would have an interest to challenge it. Um, so you could, I mean, you could conceivably negotiate further, that would be up to the parties involved.
So, and the only reason I, I, you know, and sorry to, to drag you through this, but Florida Park Drive has been a, a ge, agenda and a public comment item for as long as I can remember. So we all recognize that the, the original intention and the current use of the road has changed over 21 and a half years. Um, we're on the doorstep of some potential ability to fix that. Um, and I hate to just let it go strictly because the arithmetic that's presented here today, uh, steers us away from it. I just want to make every effort to make sure that we can't make that more palatable, um, and perhaps work forward to a solution for the traffic flow on Florida Park Drive. Uh, councilman?
How much would this cut traffic on Florida Park Drive? What's the percentage?
This project's not anticipated to cut traffic on Florida Park Drive.
Safety, it's a safety concern.
It's safe, but it won't, this won't decrease the traffic at all.
Engineering design is, is based on traffic theory, that a narrower lane and a sweep from one side to the other will cause traffic to slow.
Slow.
And the hope that placing two of these instances would give the driver the perception that it's not worth my time to speed up again because I'm just going to have to slow again at the next diversion. But that's, again, that's traffic theory. What the drivers actually do remains to be seen.
Okay.
Um, and then one last one. So, um, if we were to engage in some, some part of this or whatever, do we have other miles of roadways throughout the city, which again, this would be a, a template or a precedent for?
I don't see.
Or is, are we looking at this independently of the rest of the city's traffic pattern?
I don't necessarily think that in the near term, that this is a template for any of our other locations.
Okay.
Uh, the, the Florida Park Drive has the highest volume of any of our local streets. So it's, it's, it's more or less our one-off unicorn in the city.
And I can go back to the last slide for me, if you would, just for a minute. The options, there we go. And just help me with the third option, build one median. What does that mean?
Our contract would allow for us to reduce the contract volume. However, at this point, we don't have a contract with the contractor, so the contractor would have to agree that they'd be amenable to this. But of the two medians, uh, the location that's location A, which is just north of Farragut, if we were to build that one only, our total budget would be much closer, we would still have a budget overrun, but we'd be much closer to the, the original budgeted value. Uh, the value of doing this one versus the other is that this one is closer to Holland Park, so it would give us some potential speed control near Holland Park. It also is, of the two, the northern one, we had to design that one to water the irrigation with, uh, municipal water, whereas this one, it has been designed to water with, uh, water from, water pulled by a pump from the canal. So we'd be able to water it without putting an impact on our, uh, water supply. Now, the impact on the water supply up on the north one is not extreme and that's why our utilities department was, allowed us to have this extreme exception, because we don't have opportunity to use reuse water on the northern location if we were to water it. And in talking with our, uh, landscape engineer, uh, we, we designed with, uh, drought resistant plants for both locations so that we could potentially cut off the watering on the northern part for part of the day to try and reduce that part. But it's still an issue of, uh, the plants will look much brighter and fresher if they're getting watered on a regular basis.
Thank you. Councilman, we, we have to give some direction here. Um, let me, let me go first.
Go ahead.
So, um, you know, I stated, you know, you know, I, I like the project, I like what it does, uh, safety of course is important. Um, in my mind, this has to fall to that group of projects which would only be included in the coming year's budget if something else were to drop out, especially in light of that horrendous or exorbitant overrun. So, um, I, I can't justify it in this budget cycle unless we reduce a, another service in favor of these dollars. That, that's my opinion.
I'm on, we're on the same page.
I, I would agree with that as well.
Yep. That's your direction.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I don't, I think, I think the public seldom realizes, except for, um, you know, the, our attendees here, how complicated these projects can really be. I do appreciate you're trying to align the project with the current closure in an effort to reduce the impact on the businesses and the residents that suffer during these couple of months, so I appreciate that very much.
Okay, I have a second presentation.
So our next presentation, and I would ask, um, um, City Councilor to read the resolution into the record for us, please.
Yes, this is Agenda Item Number Five, the Beltair Right Turn Lane. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the terms and conditions of a contract with PNS Saving, Inc., along with approval of a 10% project contingency for the Beltair Parkway Right Turn Lane at East Hampton Boulevard Project. Authorizing the city manager or designate execute necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
So a second project, the city has designed a project at the intersection of Beltair and East Hampton and Central Avenue, uh, East Hampton and Central Avenue are meet up together at a traffic signal location. The purpose of this project is to add a right turn lane to the East Hampton approach. It will also extend the left turn lane to the East Hampton approach and it'll provide some additional, um, amenities where we will be purchasing traffic signal controllers with a capability that we can get some syncing between this traffic signal and the Market Avenue traffic signal. So in this drawing, the location we're talking about for the project is shown in the orange circle. Um, it's right near Public's supermarket. So what the project is going to propose is the final configuration is shown here. There will be an addition, currently, the drivers in East Ham, coming off of East Hampton have a single lane that serves for both through traffic and right turn traffic. And there's also a left turn lane. The traffic signal gives those drivers a left turn arrow display and then a green ball display following the left turn arrow. So that arrangement of the traffic signal would remain the same, but now the drivers are going to have some additional, they're going to have additional capacity. The right turners are going to be able to turn right on red potentially and the right turn traffic will get out of the way of the through traffic. We're also lengthening the left turn lane. The East Hampton Drive is one way in, one way out. It's one of those few, uh, locations in the city of Palm Coast where we have a major arterial that only has a one access exit or egress, somewhat similar to Sim, what Cimarron Drive has. You've only got one way in, one way out, and you have to go through this traffic signal. So the value of this project is we're going to get additional capacity to this intersection. The traffic, the traffic on Beltair Parkway should work better as well through this intersection because the traffic signal will have to spend less time likely on East Hampton Drive than it currently does in terms of green time, and so we'll be able to get a larger percentage of green time to the other approaches. So this project had two bidders. The bid came in at just under $500,000 and here, as we discussed before, the engineer's estimate was much lower than the bid. Uh, the difference between this project and the Florida Park Drive project is this is a different funding source. This is not coming out of the general fund, it's not coming out of the fund, money that goes toward milling and resurfacing our roads. This is, this is a fund which is filled from traffic impact fees which are charged to our developers who come in and they, their projects have an impact to our roadways and they pay these impact fees. The purpose of the impact fees is to increase the capacity at key locations of our roadway so that we can keep traffic flowing, even with the additional traffic that this, this development adds to the roadway. Now, the development, the developer, whether they're at location A or that location B, puts money into the fund, then the city declares where do we have our, our current problems? And the funding that we use comes from that single pot and neither developer A nor developer B may have necessarily impacted this location, but we're having expansion issues where we need to fix this location in order for it to work properly.
City Manager, will there be a presentation of the priorities that are attached to the impact fee fund during the budget, uh, discussions?
Yes, the five-year CIP Capital Improvement Program, it's identified through those main business.
And the reason I ask, it's, it's hard, it's certainly hard for me to evaluate the project that's on the dais right now without understanding where it falls in the, in the pecking order of, 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 of projects that require attention and the use of impact fees. I, I don't know if it's at the top of the list, in the middle, I just, I'm not sure.
Yep, I think that would be useful information, but I can tell you firsthand, I've been traveling down Beltair excessively for, you know, disproportionate to what I used to, and I noticed this exact intersection, exactly what you're talking about, is that it takes an excess amount of time to clear all the traffic, um, whereas this could remediate some of that backup. So, um, I totally, I have no doubt that this is, uh, up on top of the list for, uh, traffic impact, uh, funds to be distributed to, but I think having a list would also be helpful because I'm sure there's other places where I'm not driving that are having the same type of issues, this is just anecdotal.
Yeah, I, I do think having a list of priorities, um, not just on this subject, but as we talked about with Park and Recreation and so on and so forth, makes it a little easier for us, but I do see the importance of this project. So I would guess it would be close to the top, but I think maybe we're going to get an answer to that question.
Mr. Coles?
I can speak a little bit to the overall transportation impact fee fund.
Go ahead.
And we, you know, there's obviously been a lot of developments, so there's a lot of dollars in that fund that accounts for multiple projects. We do have a lot of grant-funded projects as well that easily partially are fully funded those projects. This East Hampton project has been in the works for many, many years. Um, it's one of our older ones, was identified years ago as one of our top priority projects to implement some sort of enhancement for to deal with that additional capacity. You know, you know, as indicated, it's the only way in and out of that E-section, it serves a lot of residences, uh, it's been in the works for, for a long time. It is fully, we worked through the draft of our CIP plan that, that will be coming to you in early August, but currently, this project is fully funded as well as all the other projects that are identified in there. This is one of our older ones, so we did, we adjusted the formula and based on our traffic engineers' analysis, you know, of where we need to look at projects first, this one is still up there near the top of the list, so this is not pushing any other project out, um, because we've had that increase in impact fees coming in. It offsets the additional cost of the bid that came in. So, um, we prioritize in the projects, we didn't have to do that, um, and this has been one of the top priority projects in there, so it hasn't shifted those project order around to make this happen.
Unless there are additional questions, I think the City Council has kind of demonstrated a consensus that they are in favor of moving forward with this project. Um, but I would ask the same question as before, I would like to have a little more information, um, not changing the consensus, on the explanation for the differential between the, the estimate and the bid net of the obvious increase in materials and, um, fuel and, and labor, whatever else that is. In other words, how much of reserve is whoever we're looking at to do this building in there?
Okay.
Okay.
With this project, we had more than one bidder, right? So that's kind of what costs are for a project like this right now.
The next, the second bidder, their price was $100,000 higher than the first bidder.
That's kind of what the cost is.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Presentations.
Thank you.
Next item is, uh, number six on the agenda and it, uh, Nacef, you would read that in for us, please?
Yes, this is the Lehigh Trailhead Project. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the terms and conditions of a contract with Paul Culver Construction, Inc., a work order with DRMP, Inc., a work order with CPH Engineers, and a 10.11% project contingency for the Lehigh Trailhead Project. Authorizing the city manager or designate to execute the work order, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, good morning. Um, I do have a presentation, it actually covers the Lehigh Trailhead Item Number Six as well as the upcoming Item Number Seven, the Southern Recreation Facility. So you, you'll see, um, communication on both those items through, in the presentation. So starting off with the Lehigh Trailhead, you know, this, um, Southern Recreation Facility that was presented to council back at the end of June in terms of the vision for this area of, um, the city, was presented to council. It, it talked about, you know, the quality of life and the services provided by the city. for the citizens. This was the amenities that serve the Southern Recreation Area in terms of the healthy activities, you know, the various elements that were in, offered to the residents, uh, currently, either through cultural arts or just events and festivals or through, you know, just active, um, activities that were around. And the various locations that those were offered as shown here on this map. This is, uh, one of the slides from that presentation that was, uh, shown to council. The Southern Recreation Facility property is just over 63 acres. Currently, the Lehigh Trail is along the northern, um, edge here on state-owned land that's managed by the county that runs east-west. Um, there are two cell towers on the site and, and master plan, Phase One, was built in 2008 with 10 full-size clay courts and a temporary clubhouse. And Fire Station 25 and administrative offices is also located on this property. In terms of implementing the master plan, Phase Two, we have been working on and council has seen, uh, the iterations showing what the next phase of improvements would be. It is the Lehigh Trailhead Project. We would start with that one. Is proposed to add community gardens, a dog park, and an exercise trail connection to there with restrooms. And we'll get into more specifics on the upcoming slide. And then, uh, Recreation Facility Project was existing. You know, we offer tennis lessons, tennis programs, tournaments, special events, and then we're proposing to add in pickleball lessons and programs, room rentals, exercise programs, and, and other components we'll see in some upcoming slides. So, speaking to specifically the Lehigh Trailhead Project, you can see here, it, it borders Belt Air and it's on the northern side of, uh, the entrance into the facility. It is, falls mostly under the FPL power lines. And you can see the Lehigh Trail along the northern edge. There's a restroom building that'll be there, or two single-user restrooms, like our typical parks. There'll be a covered area for a picnic pavilion. Um, there'll be a storage maintenance area for staff to, to maintain the facility and area, uh, in that, uh, functions. Um, there'll be a dog park, about 1.3 acres with some shade pavilions, two entries with washdown. There'll be 72 parking spots added, six of them ADA compliant, and community gardens, 18 garden plots, and one shade pavilion and compost bin. Back when the community center was constructed, you know, the city had community gardens at that location. And, you know, at that time, during that development, we, we indicated and we were working with FPL on, on finding a home for those at this facility and those that have been in the works to relocate them here. We did go through quite a few, um, discussions back and forth with FPL in terms of what activities would be allowed within this area. And, and those were some of the components that we were, um, able to add in. You know, the, the permanent trailhead obviously is tied to, you know, improving safety. You know, right now, we have cars, you know, pulling in and out of Belt Air parking in the right of way. Um, and this creates a dedicated spot paved and proved with restrooms, ADA compliant, you know, area for the users of the trail network to, to come and go. So, the funding for the construction phase of the Trailhead Project, you know, the, the construction contract, we have, um, the base bid, which are FDOT eligible items. We do have some FDOT involvement on this project. It, they came in at 1.24 million. And then, there's alternates which are not, the non-eligible items which are components like the community gardens and dog park and associated parking related to those. And the construction engineering and inspection phase, which would be the city's match on the, on the grant, is a little over 300,000. We have some post-design services from the engineer record to provide assistance during that, the construction phase. And then, we have a, a project contingency. So, it's just over two and a half million dollars that would cover all those components above. The FDOT grant covers about 63%. Uh, the park impact fees cover 26%. And then, the State Road 100 CRA would cover about 11%. And that is because the park impact fees can't fully fund, um, new capacity, they only can fund a portion of it. So, those, that match has to come from somewhere. And with this project being located within the State Road 100 CRA, we're able to utilize those dollars as the match. You can see the, the DOT funds are above the base bid amount. We are working with them to allocate the differential to either the contingency or for a portion of the CEI cost. So, we are working through their, their, uh, LAP, um, agreement folks to see if we can utilize the, the surplus grant funds to help offset some of the city costs. So, this gets into the next item on the agenda, which is the Recreation Facility Project. There'll be a community building which will house, you know, some administrative offices, restrooms, locker rooms, um, you know, kitchen dining area, two multipurpose rooms, a lobby, function spaces, some exterior patio, balconies. And I'll have a, an upcoming slide, a little walk-around that'll show you through the building and then identify some of those components. There'll be six pickleball courts funded by the city. And then, there's an alternative to add covering lights and solar for the, that, those six courts. And then, there's an additional six courts which the city has applied for a TDC grant to fund those courts. And we'll cover the analysis of the grant versus what the, the bid amount is for those So, we have here, uh... This will just give you a little run-through of the building where you get into the main part of the building. You have your reception area, your little walk-up food service area in the back, some seating. You head out, outdoors and you have a, a covered seating area and a little portion that's uncovered, um, right off the main lobby area that can host events or just provide dining for the, the food service. So, off to the right are, would be the restrooms and locker rooms and an elevator going to the second floor. Again, this area here is multi-function space. It's a large area depending on what's happening. People could set up and, and do different things in that particular area. You go outside here, again, a little covered area. These are the six courts with, showing a covering, um, of those courts. That is an option and alternative to consider.
So, th- this is a, a reduced version of the community center, a versatile, uh, area of, of community engagement with the addition of the recreational characteristics.
Correct. This second floor is completely wide open for multi-function spaces for the public. There are two, um, large spaces. This one here, we're, we're going into now is a multi-function space, very similar to what's at the community center. Uh, can host a, a variety of, um, programs. And right adjacent to it is, is another space that we'll be walking into here as a, a second function space. And you are correct, it is very similar to the community center. You know, part of what we had heard from council and, and input was that, you know, this needed to be more of a community function space for the residents of the city. And we, we strive to, to meet that, that, um, initiative and demand. We have these outdoor function spaces as well, um, covered balconies, um, and on the first floor area, that, that large gathering space as well where we can hold a multitude of activities, programs, and events in, at this facility for the residents.
Carl, the only thing I would ask you in, in future presentations, or if this comes back again, is if you could include an Esri, um, uh, heat map or, or, or circular map that shows the proximity and concentration of residents that live, um, you know, close to the, the central point here and the demographics. I think that's, that information is available. It would help me, orient me better with how close this facility is to how many residents.
Right. And, um, part of what we can include in that would be showing, um, the town center, all the residential developments. There's been four or five large-scale residential developments that are just underway to be constructed now. So, you probably have, what's been constructed with apartments, you have over 1,000 dwelling units just in town center that are up and coming, that are, you know, gonna be served by this facility, not including the existing ITT lots that serve this area. And part of the analysis, we've been talking about doing, um, an energy analysis, it's a ROI, and, and part of the, the design team's, um, program was to do, look at that. So, obviously, the covering of pickleball courts, one through six, provide a very large roof area. And, um, they, they looked at two options. One was, okay, let's look at the peak proposed, you know, intended or anticipated peak demand for the facility and look at what that cost or size of array that would be and what the cost would be. So, the option one is about 103 kilowatt of array, which is about $275,000 to install those. And based on the payback, it's roughly a 14-year payback. Option two is to fully cover the entire roof and maximize the, the roof covering with solar panels. And that's, you can see a little over $500,000 and the payback's about 17 and a half years. This does not intend to provide any storage or batteries. Uh, and excess power can be sold back to FPL currently. However, legislation may change that, that program. But currently, that is an option. And the lifespan is about 25 years. Not that they'll stop working in 25 years, they just start to lose efficiency at that point. So, there, there is a payback for this and you can see off to the right, you know, if you just go with the 25 years and, and just going with the peak demand, you know, there's a, a net savings to the city of over $200,000 programmed, you know, to add solar into the project. So, so it is a cost-benefit option at this time to, to do this as a, as an initiative. This is something we could look at doing with a smaller array, um, verify the, the actual meets our demand and look at how much off-peak hours or non-solar hours, energy usage, and look, then reanalyze whether we add batteries and storage capacity on-site, if that makes sense. That's, that's, you know, a second component that gets a lot more costly, so you'd have to have a lot more off-use, power usage to make that cost feasible. But that is something we would, can easily add on in the future. Um, this is what was proposed as the most economical system based on available savings and incentives is, is recommended in, during that solar analysis by the consultant. So, there's various components to this project. Um, there's the, the base bid, which is, is really the, the recreation facility and the original, the six pickleball courts and all the associated infrastructure and site work that's tied to that initial package of development of just over eight point, well, $8,325,200. Pickleball court seven through 12 is just over 1.1 million. Pickleball court coverings of the courts, one through six, is 890,000. And then, the solar panels that you saw was just over 275,000. And then, there's some city expenses in contingency, permit fees, some IT, security. We, I think we have some wetland impacts that we, we're gonna have to offset some, um, small dollar there. And that owner contingency of $250,000, that's not a contractor contingency because this is a, a CM at-risk project. So, they, that is a not-to-exceed dollar amount. And any cost savings, the savings come back to the city. So, that, that is, one of the benefits is it's a not-to-exceed amount. And you can see the, the funding chart off to the right. We initially, in previous discussions with council, there was some general fund dollars coming in here through a capital fund transfer through, from past years where pickleball courts that were really moved or identified or tied to providing pickleball courts, dedicated pickleball courts. Due to the rise in development in the influx of the park impact fees, we're able to fund this without using any of the general fund dollars. This is strictly funded with park impact fees, the TDC grant. Now, we do not have that grant yet. We did apply. It goes to the board end of July and then the county commission would finally adopt it in August.
And we're the sole, uh...
Sole applicant for the full amount.
Were the sole applicant for the TDC grant, is that correct?
Correct. The full amount, it's being offered.
That would give us a 99% surety that we're going to get it, right?
Well, 20% of us up here also.
You'd have to be looking at Lauren on that one. And then, the balance of the, again, the park impact fees, the, the part that can't be used for additional capacity would have to come from another source, which, again, this project is in the CRA. So, there's CRA dollars available for projects such as this to, to make up that difference. So, um, we were able to, to move this project forward in current year, upcoming year, and it would actually roll into the future year. So, it's phased over really three fiscal years in terms of the construction of this facility. So, it's not, um, gonna hit all, all in one partic- one year. And this kinda shows the timeline. In July, we would award the contract and begin some of the, the upfront construction items with summits and, and potential a little bit of work. And then, the bulk of the construction happens in '22 and then we would wrap it up in, in '23, um, by the end of the calendar year. That is, that is, the, the timeline for Lehigh Trailhead follows about the same timeline. The construction timeline is a little bit shorter, but not by much. So, the late, going, coming back to item six, which is the Lehigh Trailhead Project, there are some council actions. You'd have to approve a post-design agreement with CPH engineers for the post-design services. You'd approve, uh, a contract for CEI services. You'd approve a construction contract, um, and then you'd approve a project contingency. So, that, that's what's before council for the Lehigh Trailhead. We had bid the Trailhead Project last fall. We got one bid in at that time. We ended up not being able to obtain DOT concurrence, so there's some errors and discrepancies in the bid. That bid was eventually, um, canceled. Um, the engineer updated his estimate based on that bid. We rebid it, we got two bids this go-around. And one, one bid came in, um, just under, and the other one came in just over that estimate. But that was because we had that initial bid to work from, you know, those, those estimates nowadays from the engineers, you know, that, they're going by all old data. You know, that, that's why these engineers' estimates are so far off. They're not keeping up with the, the high rate of increased materials and labor and especially on these small projects. You know, when we were using DOT unit price indexes, they're looking at large-scale projects. These small-scale projects like the last two you saw, there's not a good correlation. You know, you, you really have to build some sort of escalation in there into what a small-scale project really means, to mobilize and demobilize and small, buy smaller quantities, you know. So, it, it's very difficult to put together an engineer's estimate on the, those smaller projects. But this one here, because we had a previous bid, we were able to get it pretty much in tune with what we anticipated it to be. And then, going to the Recreation Facility Project, there, there's the council action. We have an existing contract with Gilbane Construction Company and, and we do have a representative here today with that firm. If you do have questions for them, they're, they'd be, uh, they're here to help answer any questions you may have. But option A would be to award a GMP not-to-exceed contract for the base bid and pickleball courts, including court seven through 12 for just over 9.4 million. And then, option B would also be to include the covering in solar at just, uh, just under 10.6 million. And then, the approval of additional expenses, the owner contingency and the permit fees and another, for another $750,000. So, that, that ends my presentation and...
So, Carl, an obvious question, uh, and I'm sure you all have done the homework and research. So, with all I read about, you know, federal, um, interest in infrastructure and also in energy efficiency and renewable energy, is there no way that our solar can be, uh, paid with federal dollars?
We did, they did look at that. They weren't able to identify any that we could go after for this particular project. But that is something we definitely have our eyes on and continue to look for. But they did look into that and weren't able to identify any or rebates from FPL or, or any mechanism at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Council?
Uh, Carl, if we could just go back to the dog park. Uh, the last time I saw, um, a plan on that, I know, probably five months ago or whatever... The last time I saw a plan on that, I know probably five months ago or whatever, uh, my only concern, and I want to know if it's been addressed, is there was one dog park for all-sized dogs, which using our dog park a lot doesn't work, I can tell you. You got little dogs, you got big dogs. Have we figured out a way to split that up?
We, we have a, a big difficulty here because you can see on the, on the chart here, these big circles. FPL requires a certain maneuvering and clearance along, along all their power poles within the overhead easement line and don't allow any structures or items to be built within those areas. So our dog park is located basically in this zone here. And you can see there's all these circles. So it, it doesn't leave opportunity to add a fence across down the middle at any point that's gonna obstruct FPL's use of the property to create two function spaces. Now, we, we did have the discussion with the Parks and Rec director. I know we are looking at creating a small dog park a little further south on Valter. There's a new development going in where we, we were looking at having a small dog park. And then we also talked about potentially having certain hours of time where this dog park would be small dog park during these hours, large dog during these hour, you know, these other hours. So that, that I believe is how Parks and Rec was looking at intending to do something.
Carl, let me ask you a question. I, I appreciate the easement from, FPL you said?
Yes.
I mean, is there the possibility to speak to FPL about putting a removable barricade that was attractive, but that could be moved when they need it, that would segregate part, a portion of the park for, I, I mean, Councilman's point, I understand, I get it.
You can't have like an 80-pound dog like...
No, 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 but is, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the barricades, for example, on Florida Park, something that is nicer looking than that, but there must be some ability and I can't imagine FPL would have an issue with that if they're, you know, easily removed in the event that they need to access their easement? Or am I on the wrong track here?
They, they're not very flexible, but we, we can propose something for them. Obviously, for large dogs, you want something, we typically have been putting at least a four-foot-high fence to large dogs and obviously jump pretty high. So I, we'll have to look at that to see if we can come up with something and propose an item to FPL to see if we can gain their approval. Maybe they've come across something somewhere else, but it, it's worth the discussion point with FPL. We can approach them and have that conversation.
Thank you, okay.
And, and I just want to make sure I understand this on the racquetball center thing. No money out of us, it's all grants?
All park impact fees, CRA and TDC grant, no general fund dollars, correct?
And this is a scaled-down version from what we were originally talking about?
Not, not quite. Not, not only is it scaled down, but it's flex space now. So now it's a, a, a community center two, which affords the public the opportunity to... What it does is it relieves the pressure on our community center, which is now overbooked.
These rooms are rooms that we would lease, rent out, start to fee for?
Yeah, Parks and Rec would have programs and events space here, just like the community center.
The, the food item part of this?
Mm-hmm.
What exactly is that?
That is...
That's for, wait, wait, wait. That's for somebody that's having an event to bring in their own food and just like we do at the community center.
So we're not setting up a concession for anything?
Not even there, nope. Just like, just like...
I have to ask.
Just like the community center.
Okay. But we will have to hire additional employees to staff this facility, correct? Do we have any type of business plan or model or anything?
Well, we have employees there now.
Right.
Now, I guess you're asking, would you have to add to them because of the scale of the facility? Can't answer the question.
Yeah, James may be best to answer that question, but I know by offering some of the program spaces here, they're probably gonna have a couple additional staff. It won't be until fiscal year '24.
All I want to know is, will we be able to break even on this? After we, you know, pay those employees and everything else?
Uh, that would be definitely our goal with programs and events is to kind of make this facility cost recovery. It wouldn't be too much stuff. Obviously, maintenance would be a big one, probably need a full-time maintenance person. We do have currently instructors, a supervisor, and we do have a quality team of facility clerks there as well. So wouldn't, we'd need some additional, but not too many.
Okay, that's all I have.
Counselor?
I, I really believe that these amenities make us a premier living destination for, for everybody. That's why so many people want to be here, because we provide these quality amenities to the community. So I thank you for your work. Love the five-letter word grant. I, I love that you, you sought out and found grant funds for some of this. No general fund dollars are being used to fund this project and that the majority of the money for this is for that community, that shared community space, and only a small portion of it are for some additional recreation pickleball courts. I, I thank you for all your hard work that you've put into, to bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Dito.
Counselor?
Uh, two things that are fantastic, the migration away from using general fund dollars. And I also encourage the exploration of the solar possibilities. I would also like to tell our council that I believe the shades for the additional pickleball courts not only make the pickleball courts usable during the heat, but also for, I'm sure summertime programming that can occur at, at these facilities, it's really important to keep kids out of the sun and just in general when it is like it is outside now during the midday without any type of shade, it's really brutal out there. And that makes the space usable almost around the clock.
I would be remiss if I didn't ask if there was a revenue-producing electric car-charging station or stations at this facility?
Yes, there will be. You know, this is also gonna be one of our LEED certified facilities. We are seeking LEED Silver certification also.
Very good.
And that is part of it.
Gentlemen, thank you for your presentation this morning.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to our final presentation this morning, which is the proposed fiscal year 2023 general fund budget and trim rate options.
Can't spell general fund without fun.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I could, I'd like to provide a brief introduction for our staff in the process. Before Elena kicks us off here, I want to take a, a brief moment to reflect on how extensive these efforts are and having from citizen survey results in the early part of the calendar year, then, and then also managing three budgets at certain parts of the year, right? You're dealing with past, current, and future budgets at certain crossroads in the year. So I just want to foremost applaud not only our finance team, but our entire team. And over the course of the last year, it has been a directive of this administration to focus on mission-critical areas that will always include safety, our employees', level service, and also managing the extreme economic times we're going through right now. Before I go into each of those focus areas, I'd just like to make the impression you've heard a lot of increase in cost, resource issues, that this budget also is looking at mitigating the risk of that future recession period. It is key to understand that the decisions we make today, as council has been going over through all the items, that it will have an effect on budget implications in the future. So first, I want to say ensuring our employees are a top priority for this budget process. The first actions within the budget focuses on our employees retaining and recruiting talent while focusing on benefits and growing career paths within the organization. So succession planning is key as we have those challenges as well within the workforce. Evaluating level of service demands through data-driven decision-making while delivering the exceptional service our community expects. Our workforce is mission-critical to making sure exceptional emergency services, riderways or mode, litter collected, invoice or processed, hundreds of invoices, and making sure that we're using data to help us make those decisions so we can get the most out of our resources as we again talk about how we manage our budget. And also, I mean, I don't have to echo this too much, is the inflation and, and change in the costs and how we can remain nimble on that change. So lastly, the, the final impression I want to make is that we're nearing our peak hurricane season, part of storm season. So again, keeping our reserves within our policy standard is also part of the thoughtfulness of this prepared budget. Thank you, and please, team.
Thank you. So, good morning, Mayor and City Council. Gwen and I are here to talk to you about the general fund budget and also setting the maximum millage rate for next week's adoption. So I'll just let Gwen get us started. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So between January and June, you've seen us quite a bit. We've covered several items from citizen survey to adoption of the SAP priorities, departmental operation overviews, as well as budget presentations. So as you can see during the months of July and August, you will have several detailed budget preparation, presentations for all our operational and capital budgets in present preparation for the September public hearings to adopt our 2023 budget. So today, we will review the trim timeline, the fiscal year 2023 maximum millage rate proposal, as well as the general fund revenues, expenditures, and proposed personnel request. This is a look at our trim timeline. On June 1st, the property appraiser provided a total assessed value of the non-exempt property. The city of Palm Coast received a preliminary estimate of $7.5 billion. On July 1st, the property appraiser certified the taxable value at $7.6 billion, which represents an increase of 19.7%. Of the 19.7%, approximately 5% or $315 million is attributable to the new construction. So within 35 days of the value certification, the current year-proposed maximum millage rate must be set and will be reviewed, and we will review options as we move through the presentation. The assessed millage can be reduced, but it cannot be increased after that point. So we will come to you on July 19th to adopt the proposed maximum millage rate and to set the date and time for the first public hearing. So we are suggesting the first public hearing will be scheduled for September 8th at 5:15 here at City Hall, and it will be advertised on the trim notice sent out by the property appraiser. This hearing will set the tentative budget and your tentative millage rate. The final public hearing, scheduled for September 21st at 5:15, also here at City Hall, will adopt the final budget and millage rate. So the budgets presented to you today is proposing the same millage rate that was adopted last year at 4.61. This is an overview of the general fund positions. A total increase of 12 full-time new staff is being requested for fiscal year '23. We will go into more detail in the next two slides, but as you can see, the general fund currently holds approximately 244 positions. The new positions have different starting dates based on budget and departmental needs. As the departments present their budgets to council, they will provide additional information regarding the needs for this additional staff. So for the city manager's office, we are proposing the transfer of a senior staff assistant from the communications, as well as a transfer of the assistant city manager from Economic Development Department. Human Resources has requested a risk management coordinator and the transfer of the benefits coordinator that was split with the health insurance fund. Financial Services is requesting a procurement coordinator. The communications department is requesting a communication specialist, as well as part-time hours for the freelance communications staff. The fire department has requested two new firefighter EMTs and, and a fire inspector. Public Works Streets is requesting two new equipment operators. Community Development is requesting a community development technician. Parks and Rec is requesting a transfer of .5 FTE from Parks Maintenance, as well as .5 FTE from the Aquatic Center to Parks and Recreation, along with a new aquatic safety specialist. Construction Management Engineering is requesting an architect. And as mentioned on the last slide, the assistant city manager is transferring from the Economic Development to the city manager department. So Helena will now review the general fund revenues.
I'm sorry, I missed the, the transfer to and from the city manager's office regarding economic development. Did that appear on two different slides?
Yes. So it just showed going from the city manager, going from the economic development to the city manager on the first slide, and the second slide has it from the economic development, just showing the transfer.
So one's the source and one's the destination, okay.
Okay, so this is a big-picture look at the general fund revenues. Overall, change of approximately $3.5 million or 7.1%. We're not gonna go through every revenue line, however, we do like to point out some of the significant revenues. As council can see, Advalorem is the largest revenue source for the general fund. As Gwen mentioned earlier in the presentation, the city's assessed value has increased by 19.7% with approximately 5% attributable to new construction, assuming the same millage rate from last year of 4.61. We would generate approximately $33.8 million in Advalorem revenues, of which $33,300 would be to support the general fund. The amount attributable to new construction is approximately $1.4 million. The next category includes the state revenues that the city receives. We are still waiting for final projections from the state, however, based on numbers already released, there is a moderate increase to the absent sales tax, a decrease to state revenue sharing. And although the estimate for communication tax has not been released by the state, we are estimating a moderate increase based on history with that revenue. And as the state updates the estimates, we'll revise our numbers and update council. So the other change is inappropriate fund balance. The reason for that change is the $2.5 million transfer to the capital projects for the Public Works facility. That was a one-time transfer for fiscal year '22. Fiscal year '23 appropriated fund balance is to fund the contingency to handle fluctuation in revenues and expenditures as we have in the past, the value adjustment board contingency, and capital equipment supplement. This is a big-picture summary of the general fund expenditures. These will be covered in the following slides by each department director, so I will not go into details on this slide. However, our proposed budget for the general fund is $52.7 million, an increase of $3.5 million from fiscal year '22, or 7.1%. We will now proceed to the general fund expenditures, starting with what we call our administrative services department.
Let me ask you just a quick question so I can keep up with you. At some point, can you demonstrate for us, you talked about new construction in terms of that's adding to the Advalorem tax. What I, what I don't recognize is the addition to the Advalorem tax on the increase in the assessed value of existing property.
So overall, our increase in property taxes is $5.3 million. Of that $5.3 million, 1.4 is new construction, so the balance would be existing properties.
Would be properties that were on the tax roll in the prior period but have increased according to the property appraiser in their assessed value?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on to our administrative departments. Council should have received the supporting documentation worksheets with detailed line-item budgetary requests last week. These were also placed on the city's website for the public under the fiscal year 2023 budget preparation tile. This is a summary of administrative departments. The proposed budget increase is 22.1% from fiscal year '22. We will go through each department...
through each department individually, and the directors are here to answer any questions the council may have. We will start with city council budgets. The 117% increase is mainly due to changes adopted for council compensation and benefits, as per ordinance 2022-10, adopted April 19th of '22. The city manager's office is increasing by 71%, mainly due to position transfers from the Communications and Marketing Division and the Economic Development Division. Those positions were the assistant city manager and the senior staff assistant. The city clerk's budget is decreasing by 1.2%, mainly due to a decrease in estimated future costs for the municipal code corporation as it relates to codification of ordinances. City attorney's office is increasing by 8.7%. Increase is mainly due to projected CPI increases to the city attorney's contract. Communications and marketing, increase of 2.8% is mainly due to the transfer of the senior staff assistant, offset by the request for a new communication specialist, as well as re-alignment of operating expenditures, along with an increase in freelance communications part-time hours. The communications and marketing budget includes $5,000 for the council priority to research other cities' communication strategies as well. Human Resources budget is increasing by 31.3%, mainly due to a new position requested for a risk management coordinator and moving the benefits coordinator from the Health Insurance Fund. In the past, the position was split 40-60. The financial services department is increasing by 13.5%, mainly due to the new position requested for a procurement coordinator. That completes our administrative departments. So, Carl Cody is coming up to present the CMNE budget.
Yes, good morning. The construction management engineering budget is one of the budgets that's within our Stonewater Engineering Department. It is there to fund the general staff within that department that are associated with the transportation capital projects, who provide technical reviews for new development and the managed operations of the transportation network. It also includes staff who oversee the park and facility capital projects. You know, in FY '22, these staff managed over 70 projects with a budget over $30 million in value, so it's a lot of work, a lot of projects. You know, as our infrastructure and facilities age, you know, our capital projects are needed to repair or replace, you know, these items and facilities, make enhancements. You know, in addition, as we continue to grow, new projects are added to address capacity and level of service needs. So, the '23 budget increase is associated with a new position that was added this current fiscal year, but it wasn't budgeted for the entire year. And then in '23, we're asking for a new position to help deal with depth and succession planning in our park facilities section of staff. So, the new position will provide better oversight of capital projects due to current and future number of projects and the grants that staff manages.
Thank you, Carl. Now, Ray Tyner, the deputy chief development officer, will present the Community Development Division budget.
I wouldn't plan on doing that one, so. I think you did end your summary real good on the economic development of the transfer.
Well, we'll have a chance to review that when Mr. DiLorenzo returns as well, I would think.
Yes. So, here in the Economic Development Department, as you can see, there is a decrease in personnel. That is a result of transferring the assistant city manager out of this budget to the city manager's budget. There's also a realignment of operating expenditures based on next year's priorities, and the Economic Development Special Projects has been scaled to the recapture enhancement value grants that has been issued already. Now, I do believe that we have a slide here on priorities that are included in this budget. As you can see, $15,000 for Palm Coast Brands is future as a regional destination for healthcare training, complemented by research and technology innovation while fostering relationships. There is also $75,000 allocated to a conceptual master plan for Matanzas Parkway Extension, Deliver Youth Sports Activity Center feasibility study, as well as $3,000 for multifaceted approach, including TPO, collaboration with city lobbyists, and direct communication with our legislative team to encourage the inclusion of Phase 2 and 3 of Volking's Road Widening in the FDOT five-year work plan.
Thank you. That was very good. Planning Division, you know, we continue to see an increase in development activity. We talked about that at your last workshop. We have issued, to this day, probably over 50 development order applications, including approximately 25 site development applications. That facilitates a lot of work with our folks. We're also seeing about 150 to 160 single-family permits that are coming in a month, and that's a review from our development technicians. One of our needs is we're asking for a community development technician. We have, currently, we have one site development coordinator position, and that person is responsible for all those applications that come in, to make sure they're complete, drafting development orders that are issued. And so, our idea is to transfer, to reclassify a senior planning technician that we have now to help and aid to that person as part of recession planning as well, and provide this person with a lot more skills as well. So, that would open up a technician position. So, what we're asking for is a community development technician. As you recall, we had a previous discussion about, you know, you have the building technicians and you have the zoning technicians. This new concept that we had facilitated about a year ago is to have a blended position. So, when a customer comes up front, they're waiting in the building line, they don't have to go over zoning for a new, to answer a question. It provides optimal customer service for our citizens. Also, too, is one of our goals, we talked about it earlier, was as part of this strategic action plan, was to update the comprehensive plan, and we are asking for $150,000 for this process. I know a lot of focus and a lot of discussion has been resolved around one element of the comprehensive plan, and that would be housing. But as part of the comprehensive plan, I think you all discussed it at the previous, it's a comprehensive approach, okay? There's other elements of the comprehensive plan. We have the future land use element, we have the infrastructure element, we have the transportation element, we have the conservation and coastal element, we have the intergovernmental coordination element. So, all these elements require an update of our data and our analysis. It's not just the policies. If you look at our previous data analysis, it's about a book about this thick. So, you have to justify when we're, exactly, very, very thick, a lot of work, a lot of figures, a lot of maps that are involved with that. So, you know, it's going to take a lot of staff resource time and some professional services that we're asking for. You know, your first step is to community outreach on all those chapters to get that public input. You know, one of the things that we're looking at, too, is as part of the transportation analysis, we're going to analyze and hopefully work with capital projects of updating our possible impact fees for transportation and combine those two, so we can do the modeling for the city. What's it going to look like in 2045? All this information is part of our comprehensive plan. So, those are the two major items as far as the planning division. And then we have the code enforcement. We had an item earlier that we are looking at to increase the debris removal by $26,000. We're seeing an increase of debris. We're looking at, not only for a property that is not occupied, but also looking at occupied property as well that would modify our processes a little bit, due process. Structural demolition, we're looking at able to, for abandoned construction properties, those are construction properties that are abandoned. We had put in a budget of $75,000 that would cover three for us this year, for next year. And also related to that is waste hauling for our bulk trash and garbage that we have, both on abandoned and occupied and unoccupied properties as well. And then something I think you brought up, Mayor, was the outreach, and I think Ms. Bevan had mentioned as well that, you know, we are looking, next year, we put $8,000 in our budget to do some proactive approaches to code enforcement. They can be anything from door hangers to pamphlets to get the word out. We're getting a whole lot of new residents in our neighborhoods. We want to be able to provide the educational outreach to maybe try to help folks understand what our code and our regulations are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyner.
Thank you, Ray. Now, we'll go over the fire department budget. Chief Berry.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Kyle Berryhill, Fire Department. The firefighters play a large role in executing our city council-focused area of safe and reliable services. In April of this year, Chief Forte and I presented an overview of the fire department detailing where we have been, where we are today, and how we're moving forward. A significant part of that discussion was the three-legged stool of effective fire service provision, proper station locations, reliable apparatus and equipment, and well-trained staff with the right culture appropriately deployed. Our current budget reflects a push for staffing with three new firefighters with a ladder truck and an operational push on firefighter development led by the fire coordinator. Next year's budget proposal that we're looking at today, we plan to continue our effort to develop staff for the coming challenges associated with growth, while addressing needs associated with reliable apparatus. The personal services increase reflects a burden of the new firefighters with a ladder truck, which we did partially last year, two new firefighter positions to control overtime associated with minimum staffing, and a new inspector position designed to provide additional capacity and succession in the prevention division. The operating expenditure is indicative of issues associated with apparatus, or the operating expenditure increase is indicative of issues associated with apparatus. First is a one-time increase of $640,000 to replace two engines in an attack truck. This makes up a gap experienced in the fleet replacement fund due to market conditions for fire trucks. As we previously noted during the fire department overview presentation this year, the market is so demand-heavy that we're seeing a nearly two-year gap between placing our order and receiving the apparatus. We're also experiencing that on the purchasing end as well. Our fleet department has performed an analysis of the equipment in question, and making this investment now prevents further investment in apparatus that have reached a tipping point from reliability perspective. This budget also includes an increase of $140,000 to the annual savings for fleet replacement to reflect the realities of the cost of today's apparatus. Additionally, the national fuel situation is reflected in a $70,000 increase in fuel budget and increases to the mowing and fleet maintenance allocations. Questions?
Thank you, Kyle. We will now review the law enforcement budget, which is our Flagler County Sheriff's Office contract. This, the sheriff's office has requested five additional deputies for fiscal year 2023 to be added to the contract for enhanced law enforcement services. This is a graph showing the contract history. The contract also contains a provision for a 5% increase that is also reflected in our fiscal year 2023 budget. So, overall, the law enforcement budget is increasing by 13.5%, mainly due to the 5% contractual increase, as well as the five additional deputies requested. Matt Mansell, Director of Public Works, will present the streets maintenance budget.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The Public Works Street Division this year is requesting two additional equipment operator positions. These positions allow us to address the increased impact of litter within the city, as well as allowing us to maintain expected levels of service for our added detailed median areas that were brought online over the past few fiscal years. Under our operating expenditures, we've also seen increases in supplies and services across the board, which have ranged between 15 to 300%. We're projecting an increase in this area to allow us to continue current operations moving forward in a time of unparalleled inflation. For inter-fund transfers, this area includes the equipment and IT support for new positions, as well as added equipment for our sidewalks maintenance staff that will allow them to access, better access our multi-use trails for purposes of inspecting and making repairs in those areas. Any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Now, James Hurst is coming to present the Parks and Recreation budget.
Yeah, I'm the lucky one with five slides. But good morning, Council, and we'll go through Parks and Recreation. So, overall, Parks and Recreation is requesting an 11% increase between all our five budget areas. The next fiscal year, we were concentrating on replacing some old, older equipment, aging equipment, and also working on our employee roadmaps and staff retention. And we'll go through each one individually. So, the first one here is Parks and Recreation. We just see a little bit of an increase with personnel services, and that, again, is to go back to our succession planning and creating kind of a deeper bullpen for our Parks and Recreation Department. And then another increase we would see is for the cultural art grant, which is just expanding our current opportunity for grants for the community and providing a more regional impact for the city and the county. Operations stay the same, little bit of increase, the help with our council priority of civic programming with Flagler Schools. So, that is, any questions on Parks and Rec? The Aquatic Center, so on April 24th, per your direction as council, we included year-round operations for the swimming pool. Mostly, we see an increase in our propane and our chemicals and chlorine. We also are requesting a full-time employee, aquatic and safety specialist, add as to help with supervisor backup. Currently, they work a lot of hours and with some backup for our supervisor, some time off, no burnout, things like that, helping our employees there. Any questions on the aquatics? The tennis center.
I'm sorry, back to the aquatic center. The vision behind this budget is the aquatic center is a, it's an interim solution to a much more robust aquatic center in the future.
Yeah. This is just one step to help alleviate some
It's a bridge.
Demand, yeah. The tennis center, really, 16.3% increase, and that's mainly bringing back the USTA men's tournament that we host every year. Due to COVID, we could not host it for the first time in about 10 or so years. So, if we don't bring this back, Palm Coast will lose its spot on the tour. So, we're looking to bring that back, and that's just the purse prize, some operations to help run that event, the officials coming along as well. We're also looking at a little bit of fleet replacement as well, just to help with maintenance and aging equipment over there as well. The Palm Harbor Golf Course, the major increase here is our fleet operations. Obviously, we're trying to replace most of our remaining golf cart fleet, but we also are trying to replace some aging equipment that we've noticed. For example, we have an old Massey Ferguson tractor from, I think it was the early 90s, so it's probably, it's reaching 30, 40 years old. So, we're looking to replace that. And I mean, we have high quality, we have a good quality golf course, and having this new equipment and replacing this old equipment will help us keep that high level of service for the golf course. And then Parks Maintenance, not really much of an increase for our park maintenance. A lot of it, we this year decided to kind of concentrate on our roadmap and our succession planning for our employees. We're also looking, we added a little bit in operation for a little bit of our, you'll see in the next slide, but the council priority you'll see in the next slide, but the council priority of naming facilities that we needed the supplies. It's not much, but a lot of this is just really concentrating on getting our employees the best training they can. And then these are our council priorities. So an inventory, obviously, we would need the supplies if we were going to rename some facilities that are coming up. And then we briefly touched on the Flagler County civic program. And that is really it for Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now review the general fund non-partemental budget. As you can see, the non-partemental is decreasing by 45.7% and that decrease is mainly due to the fiscal year 22, $2.5 million transfer to the capital projects fund. We are proposing a contingency as we have in the past and that is to deal with the value adjustment board at, in December as well as revenue and expenditure fluctuations in the general fund. This graph shows a history of our millage rate compared to our property values from 2018 to present. The property values have been increasing. Council maintained the millage rate at 4.6989 for the periods of 2019 to 2021 and reduced to 4.6100 in fiscal year 2022. This is a look at how a dollar is split between the taxing authorities for each dollar in ad valorem taxes paid. Flagler County receives 44 cents, school board 30 cents, City of Palm Coast 23 cents, and other taxing authorities receive 3 cents. It's important to note that the percentage allocated to the city is approximately 23%. This is a look at the history for the last several years for the millage rate, property values, receipts collected, and population. As you can see, we have been experiencing increase in property values as well as population growth. The fiscal year 2023 values are based on the property appraisers July 1 valuation and assuming the same millage rate from last year of 4.61. These are the millage rate options. We are required to share with you all options that are available. Fiscal year adopted rate was 4.61. Your rollback rate is 4.0138. The majority vote is 5.9033 and a two-third vote would be 6.4936. The proposed millage rate is 4.61 and would be set at your next business meeting on July 19th. We want to remind council that you are approving the maximum millage rate. The rate can be reduced as we proceed with the budget process. It cannot be increased beyond the rate you establish next week.
I'm sorry, just have one question. Just so I'm clear on what you just said. It can be reduced as we continue on?
That is correct.
It just can't be increased?
That is correct. We'd be setting the maximum millage rate. We would like to remind the public where they can access this presentation as well as the detailed budget worksheets. They, it is available by clicking the budget preparation tile on the city's website and we will be back Tuesday the 19th to adopt the maximum millage rate. This completes our presentation.
So two comments. One, city manager, staff has been directed to review their budget asks and to trim them to the lowest level that they feel they can operate their department. Is that, 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 that has already occurred?
That is correct.
And represented in these numbers today?
Correct.
Okay, and the other comment I have is, so the challenge here is, so we have growth. We have property that was on the tax roll last year, which has gained considerable value. So a tremendous amount of wealth has been created in the community amongst the residents who own property here in Flagler County. And, but at the same time, we are facing, you know, uncertain economic conditions going forward, which again, city manager, you have included to the best of your ability that in the budget consideration.
Yes, that's correct. As part of my introductions, staff was directed as part of the budget planning to make sure that we had a pivot point depending on what the economic outcome faced with, faced us in the next two years and also respecting the increase in costs that you've heard in the showcase meetings from fuel to equipment and those as well, so competing challenges.
And my only other comment that I'll open up for everybody is that I am aware of staff and city employees' commitment and sacrifice over these last couple of years coming out of COVID in terms of the bonus situation, the contribution to benefits packages, and the decrease in millage of last year. So I didn't see that clearly indicated in the slides, but I think it's important that we recognize how much, how many city employees have contributed to get us to this point today. And with that, I'll open up for, for comments. I mean, it's a lot to digest, obviously, so just help us again. You're looking for a millage rate vote on what date?
Next Tuesday, the 19th, and that is your maximum millage rate.
Okay. So I would ask each of our city council members to line items and any comments. Will we have an opportunity to discuss those before next Tuesday?
We will do the presentation on Tuesday.
So we'll have a chance to discuss that in advance of a vote? Right, okay. Comments?
Well, again, thank you for, you guys worked really hard on this and, and I know this is a tough situation. I know the cost, the inflation, everything. Our taxpayers are feeling that, that, that burden too. And, and I think we need to look at these millage rates. And personally, just, I think we need to look at lowering this millage rate and helping our homeowners out because we don't know how much longer this property value that they're experiencing is going to be there. You know, I, I read an article today that 15%, which is the highest like in like 10 years of, of, of new home contracts have been canceled by buyers. Part of it has to do with the cost now, the increase in mortgage rates and also probably some uncertainty about the future. And I think that's what we're facing, an uncertain future here. And I think everyone, everyone I talk to, you know, they're, they're starting to coordinate their trips so they're not spending money on gas, except for Nick. But, you know, they're starting to pull back on going out to dinner and they're starting to put items on the back burner that they would like to have, but they don't absolutely need. So I appreciate staff trying to come up with, you know, you know, keeping this in mind while preparing this budget, but I, I, I think we may have to go cut a little bit deeper. That's my initial reaction to this. Councilman?
Yeah, I mean, with uncertain times, it's, it's hard to know what the future holds and to predict what, what's going to happen moving forward. So I, I do want to make sure that we are fiscally responsible with the money that's provided to us while continuing to provide the, the safety and, and the needs and meeting the needs of our community. So it's, it's working to find what that balance might look like.
And again, I would just like to echo precisely what my colleagues have said. I appreciate all the hard work that goes into this. It's not my first rodeo and it's certainly not yours either. If I have any questions about any of the individual line items, I'll certainly reach out over this upcoming week. I would say that we're in a tough spot here because of our growing population. Some of our services don't scale linearly, you know, with additional staffing and everything needed. And we're seeing, I don't want to say unprecedented growth because there have been times in the past, but with this rate of growth, it's, it's hard to scale that level of service in a linear fashion with some of the different services that we provide. So tough situation we're in, but I appreciate all the hard work and thank you for always being available to answer my questions.
City manager, I put you on the spot. I would encourage each city council member to talk to city manager about, you know, individual line items and areas that you feel are appropriate to discuss to achieve a goal that you're looking for. I think the, a detailed request or conversation on what could be increased, decreased, or left the same is, is vital to, you know, that millage rate is the end of obviously a very long and involved process. So we really need to go backwards and, and identify those items that maybe perhaps can be pushed forward, phased, or whatever it might be. But I think we owe the public a listing of those items that we would like to address in that fashion. Very good. With that, thank you very much for the presentation. I think you guys did an excellent job and-
Thank you.
Very good. With that, I will move to the next item on the agenda, which would be public participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address city council at this time for any item that was not on the covered previously on the agenda today?
Alan Lowe. That was a very informative budget review and I'm, I'm glad that it was put together in the way that it was. Going back a little bit to the Florida Park Drive issue. A while ago, a few meetings ago, I mentioned speed humps versus speed bumps. The, the islands that you're proposing statistically have about a 5% decrease in traffic flow. The presentation said that the reason for the island, islands were to slow traffic. At the previous meeting where I mentioned the speed humps, Councilman Clufus mentioned slowing the traffic would increase pollution and the health issue that other members that live on Florida Park Drive have brought forward. So I'm not sure that the slowing of the traffic with the islands is the answer to the issue on Florida Park Drive. But I would like to look back if we're, if we're talking about slowing traffic. I do have, I did find engineering for speed humps that can take up to 25 miles an hour. The ones out here are 15 miles an hour. Florida Park Drive is currently a 30 mile an hour road. If we were to reduce the speed limit by five miles an hour, you could then install a couple of these speed humps and there was no doubt in my mind that if you reduced it to 25 miles an hour, installed speed humps, that the traffic would shed to other areas off of Florida Park Drive. So yes, we may slow it, but we'll greatly reduce it. So I don't know what the cost of that would be, but it might be something to look into. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Also dealing with Florida Park Drive, it seems like a lot of times when we are taking a look at traffic through residential areas that we tend to focus more on safety than we do on the health end of it. Safety is something you're putting in place to prevent something that might happen. Whereas health, the children take 16 breaths every minute. We're talking about something that has affected them every day for their whole time that they're in that area with that amount of traffic. Florida Park Drive, according to FDOT, is approximately 3 million cars a year going through a residential area with homes just about 60 feet away. Then also the basketball court is about 80 feet away. So we're talking about children breathing in the fumes, but not just the fumes. You've got the traffic dust. Where does the traffic dust come from? Comes from brake, brake pad wear, comes from tire wear, comes from whatever debris is found on the, on the road itself. So they're breathing in this also, not just the fumes. It says, children being a rapid growth phase consume more unit of weight than adults. They consume more food and air. Therefore, if you breathe the same air, they will get more of the bad stuff in their system. Also, their immune systems is not fully developed. Therefore, it may impact them more than those with the mature immune system. One last thing to consider is that some pollutants are heavier than air, so they tend to stay lower in the room. Children like to play on the floor, so they are yet again more exposed to the heavy pollutants. And when you look at the charts on what, how traffic common methods do decrease traffic, the speed humps is definitely one of those that reduce more traffic than the island does. And it, and, and we want to protect their health also. It deals with quality of life. We, we want to protect the health of the children. 3 million cars a day, a year through a residential area is way too much. Please consider that.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, and also our city manager and city clerk. My name is Kathy Hyder and I realize that I came in a little bit late this morning, but I think I was right on time because I really want to compliment the Department of Parks and Recreation. As I came in, Jared Dawson was talking and I have to say, I am the co-founder of Remembering Vets and we are now Remembering Heroes, which was up on the screen when I walked in. And I have to say that we worked with them last year on our fall festival and this Department of Parks and Recreation and working with Jared Dawson, they did just an amazing job. Our event turned out beautiful. It was just a beautiful community day for the City of Palm Coast and we are looking for, forward to it again. It's coming up again this year on September 24th. We're already working with Jared and his team at the City of Palm Coast and we're looking again to have an amazing Heroes Honoring Day for the community of Palm Coast. And I thank all of you for what you do. Ed Danko, I want to compliment you on your remarks this morning because they made a lot of sense. And I just want to say that I, we really appreciate the Department of Parks and Recreation and what they do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address city council at this time for any item that was not previously covered on the agenda? Seeing no one approach, I will next ask if there are any members of city council that would like to speak to an item on the agenda?
I have nothing this week. Thank you, Mayor.
I, I'm going to have to speak on this because I was, as all of us, we were a little bit stunned this morning by the behavior of one of our council members. And for someone who talks about how we can disagree respectfully all the time, I thought what we saw this morning was, was just not quite that. A bit childish, I thought, and it's unfortunate. That's all I have to say.
Councilman? I have nothing. City Attorney, are there any comments that were, that you would like to make at the conclusion of the meeting today?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Wish you a-
I'll be there next week.
I wish you a speedy recovery and we look forward to your return. City manager, any comments?
Not today. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Then I, I have a motion, second, all in favor? We're adjourned.